So the red light went on before, it's 6:30. Yeah, but 6:30 I can't start early.
Are we good to go?
All right, I call this meeting to order at 6:30. Welcome to your city hall. We're gonna start with a couple of quick announcements just for housekeeping. So we do have live Spanish interpretation if anyone's, if is available for anybody. And also, please turn off your cell phones so that we don't get any calls in the middle of the meeting while we conduct business. And we are going to start with our invocation. And I'd like to invite Chaplain Kay Wilson-Bolton.
I can't really hear anything.
Please rise if you're able to.
Hello, Council. Hello, Gabriela. It's nice to see you there. So my heart is heavy tonight, as I'm sure it is for most of you who are following the news. And I want to start by reading a short prayer that was given by King David at a time of his life in Israel when things were bad. And he said, "Hear my cry, O God. Attend to my prayer. From the end of the earth I will call unto you when my heart is faint. Lead me to the rock that is higher than I." Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, asking for your blessing. And Lord, it's hard to pray when there's such a mixture of relief and sorrow at the same time. We're relieved that our community has been saved and preserved, and we're filled with sorrow as we watch the news and realize what people are going through now. So help us to speak kindly about the situations that people are facing. Let's pray for them because they are filled with fear and loss of hope and discouragement about their future. And Lord, as we think about our own community, I pray that we are kept safe. We are so grateful that we bypassed the mountain fire and even with the winds, we know this could happen anytime. I pray for first responders who are really struggling out there trying to protect people. Lord, bless our city council as we must carry on with the business that's at hand for the preservation of the community and everyone who relies on them to do good work that keeps us all safe. So we ask for blessing and I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing. We're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna invite our newest council member, Gabriela Ornelas, to lead us in the pledge.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. For those who have, are attending our city council meeting for the first time, welcome. This is where the business of the city happens, and these are your elected representatives. So part of this process is to allow the public to make comments, to share community concerns. And so, oops, I skipped something. So before we go into the public comment portion of this evening, we're going to ask for a roll call from our city clerk.
Councilmember Crossway?
Here.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Here.
Councilmember Ornelas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Juarez?
Here.
And Mayor Chavez?
Here.
All present. Thank you.
All right, like I mentioned, this is an opportunity for public comment on anything that's not currently on the agenda. There are speaker cards available outside, and you provide these to our city clerk, which is Julie Latchall here on my right. And so we have two public comments, so I'm going to invite Kay Wilson-Bolton to the podium.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. As you know, approximately 12,000 homes have been destroyed in the recent fires. So I want you to picture the 9,000 homes that are in Santa Paula. And imagine every single one of them destroyed, every single one. Where would we all go? And I can't keep this in anymore. I want to talk about the illegal use of fireworks. Many, if not most of us, have a neighbor who engages in the use of illegal fireworks and bombs, that we call them because that's exactly what they sound like. Most of us know who is doing it. So we either are complicit in the activity. We aren't sure if that's really our neighbor doing it, or we're afraid to report it. I know that police need evidence in order to make entry and do an investigation, and a report isn't enough. Dying by fire is torture, and it isn't quick. And so to avoid that in our community, I'm gonna ask you to consider establishing a community task force. Let us help in some meaningful way to stop the illegal use of fireworks. Either change the ordinances, increase fines or penalties, and determine what makes probable cause available to our officers to investigate properly. We can set up citizen patrols, and I don't know what else is possible, but I think it's time we have some civic and respectful conversation about this illegal activity in our community. I know I'm not the only one bothered. I'm seeing people on Nextdoor and Facebook making recommendations, but I'd like us to pull those together and do some meaningful work to keep the community safe and to stop the nonsense. The fact that we live amongst so many lawless people is amazing to me that there's no respect for the rules that are really designed to keep us safe and the community safe. So I ask you to consider that. I'm willing to help, and I know that many others are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Joseph Alexander.
Pablo Joseph Alexander.
Joseph?
Joseph.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, distinguished members of the city council. Before I begin my presentation, I want to address something Kay, and I had a meeting with her today. I did not know about that. Several, about two weeks ago, I live in Fillmore, and it literally sounded like what you heard in downtown Iraq. So I completely agree with what you say. I was shocked. Fourth of July didn't sound like that, and we live in the one town in the county where it's legal to sell fireworks. And here we are, and I seriously, I called the sheriff's department twice, and I said, "It sounded like people were setting off sticks of dynamite." There was one not far from us, what sounded like it was in the Eldorado trailer park. And I said, "This is ridiculous. Where, why are you guys not..." And they said, "We've received dozens of calls." And I said, "Why are they still going off?" And this went on for six hours. So this is, this is a drastic problem, and I agree completely with her. On a slightly separate note, I am the Grand Knight for the Knights of Columbus for the Santa Clara Valley Chapter, which serves Santa Paula. And we have been, for years now, been doing a blood drive. We deal them quarterly. We have been. The first year that we did it, we exceeded the record for Santa Paula by approximately 50 percent. So my thank you to the citizens of Santa Paula for responding. As we now know, as we well know, in the past two years, the need for blood has gone up drastically. I suspect that what we're gonna see with the fires is it's gonna continue to go up. Our next blood drive will be Sunday, January 26th, from 9:00 to 1:30 in the afternoon. It will be at Our Lady of Guadalupe Church. The following will be Sunday, April 28th, at Saint Sebastian's Church, approximately the same time. The third will be Sunday, July 27th, at Our Lady of Guadalupe Church. And the fourth will be Sunday, October 27th, at Saint Sebastian's Church. The last blood drive we had several months ago, there was somebody that came up, and I was talking to them, was a lady. And she said that she had donated on and off over the years. And she had a family member who had been in a horrific car accident and had gotten, who had received, I believe, six or seven pints of blood. They ran out of the type that she had. Fortunately, they were able to make it work for her, but she didn't know she was gonna live. And she said, you know, people hear about the, you never know, you may be saving your own family's life. And she said, "And you think it's never gonna happen to me?" And she said, "Sure enough, it did." So please come out and join us. Please come out and join us for the blood drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great. So Jonathan is going to follow up so we can get that information out through our social media and our digital newsletter that we have now. And then as we determine a strategy moving forward regarding fireworks, I know that we've had social media posts before on the issue of fireworks. So we just have to continue doing that while we figure out what the next step would be. Thank you so much for coming and sharing. The next item on the agenda is presentations. So I recently had the opportunity in December to discover a hidden, a hidden gem that we have here in Santa Paula. And that hidden gem happens to be half the people in this room because they belong, they're volunteers that provide boxing. Through the sport of boxing, an opportunity for young people to engage with that sport. And so I wanted to, Councilmember Ornelas and I had the opportunity recently to do a site visit and learn more about what's going on in our own backyard. They're currently located next to the East Campus, Ventura College East Campus. And I want to take a moment to invite, first and foremost, Gilbert Perez Fuentes. And I'm gonna invite him up here with his mom. And so I know mom is here. And I want to read this to you, and then we're gonna provide some recognition for your coaches and then do a group photo because it's important to highlight what's going on in our community. And you're a part of that. So I'm gonna read this. "In recognition of your dedication, perseverance, and passion in pursuing the sport of boxing, your commitment to developing your skills, maintaining discipline, and striving for excellence has inspired others and demonstrated the true spirit of a champion. May your passion continue to drive you towards greater success, both inside and outside the ring. I, Pedro Chavez, Mayor of City of Santa Paula, on behalf of the city council and the community, praise and recognize your accomplishments." So Gilbert happens to be a champion. And he has an outstanding record. He's been involved in the art of, in this sport since he was a little kid, like a little kid. Seven?
Six.
Six. And so he's a shining example of, when you put your mind to it, you can accomplish anything in life. And so I want to say, it's a pleasure to have met you, met your mom, met your coaches, met your fellow boxing community members. And we have to continue the work that you're doing in the community. And so I'd like to present this to you. Gabby, can you help me? Present this to Gilbert. And I want you to share just a little bit with our city council about your experience with boxing.
From my experience with boxing, since I started, I'm not gonna lie, it was difficult. But once you start progressing, you recognize that you have a whole family behind you behind boxing. It's not just you and yourself, that if you need help, you have a coach that talks to you and he helps you through it. And if you get nervous, he's gonna tell you, "It's okay. It's just part of the gang." You get nervous because you want to win. You want to succeed. And so that's why I like that boxing's not just a sport, it's family. Thank you.
It's family.
It takes, truly takes a village, right? So, you know, 14 years ago, someone had a dream about creating a space for boxing for young people. And so I'd like to acknowledge Jorge Perez, who's here, who was the driving force to be able to create this space for our young people. So Jorge, please come up, as well as inviting Eduardo Elizada-Raz, because he's Coach Blue, they know him as Coach Blue. But he's a volunteer that spends time each week training these young people. One, Farado, is one here. Another volunteer that does some incredible work. Edgar Quiros. Edgar, is Edgar here?
Está Edgar aquí.
And Omar Mercado.
Y Omar Mercado.
Is Omar here?
Está Omar aquí.
Okay, so we'll take it. And Jorge, do you want to say anything?
Jorge, quieres decir algo?
Muchas gracias a todos por el apoyo que nos están brindando en el gimnasio. Pensamos este año nosotros a cerrar el lugar por algunos problemas que tuvimos en la, pues en el pago de lugar. El gimnasio está, lo tenemos como por 12 o 13 años más o menos, pero era, como le dije al mayor, era por gracias a una corporación que tengo aquí en Santa Paula. So...
Si puede parar ahí porque va a decirle a los que no hablan español. ¿Qué está diciendo?
El gimnasio ha estado abierto por 12 años, y hemos estado abiertos gracias a una corporación que tenemos aquí en Santa Paula. Yo soy contratista aquí en el área.
The gym has been open for over 12 years, and I'm a contractor.
El gimnasio, en los 12 años o 13 que hemos estado, nunca ha habido dinero para pagarse, o hemos estado agarrando la corporación para sostenerlo.
In the 12 or 13 years that the gym has been open, we have not had any funds. So we have been using the corporation to be able to stand it by.
La razón que no lo cerramos en tanto tiempo es porque hay muchos jóvenes que están viviendo con nosotros, y muchos de ellos no pueden pagar.
And the reason why we haven't closed the gym is because a lot of these young, young children keep coming to us, and we are able to support them for them to keep coming.
Y muchos de ellos han estado, a veces nos llegan muchachos de, de pandillas y a, o que tienen problemas en casa. So nosotros junto con el equipo que tenemos de coach, siempre tratamos o lo hacemos a que entren a la sociedad.
And many of these kids come from game, game, I'm sorry, gangs or problems at home. And they come to us, and we try to help them with the, the community and the members that we have in our community.
Pueden, pueden tomar o entrevistar a jóvenes que están actualmente en el chin. Cómo les ha cambiado el, su vida ese lugar. Por eso no hemos cerrado porque a veces queremos cerrar, pero miramos que ocupan mucho ese lugar los jóvenes de aquí. No, no más de Santa Paula. Pyro, Fillmore, Santa Paula, Oxnard, Ventura, tenemos jóvenes en el chin.
We, you can interview many of these, of the young kids that come to our gym to ask them how their life has changed. And that's the reason why we haven't closed the gym because we've seen the change that it has made for these young kids. And we, we keep getting good kids from Pyro, Oxnard, Fillmore, Santa Paula.
Y realmente necesitan este lugar para los jóvenes del área.
And we really need this place for the area.
Perdón, invito a quien quiera de ustedes un día a visitarnos. Pueden hablar con los jóvenes. No se basen a lo que yo les digo. Platiquen con ellos. Agarren la experiencia que ellos tienen o que han tenido en el, en el gimnasio y van a mirar cómo les cambia la vida ese lugar.
I invite you to come and talk to these young kids so you can listen to what their experience has been. Don't base it on what I am telling you, but come and then have an interview and see what they have to say.
También quiero dar las gracias a los coachs que, coachs que sin recibir dinero han estado gratis ayudando a estos jóvenes. También a la compañía de limonera aquí en Laria, que nos ha dado el trabajo y ellos sin saber han estado ayudando para que este lugar esté ahora abierto.
I also want to thank the coach that without being paid, they continue to come and help us. And also to the company, the lemon company, that have been able to, to help us.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Vamos a tomar una foto. Quiero que se pongan en el medio aquí. Todos los contratos.
Please come to the stage.
And then when you're, when you're here, I'll be on the look to head out. So 10 more, 11 more minutes.
They're next to, they're next to the Ventura County East Campus. And then they're currently expanding the site, which they'll be moving on February 12th. Oh, this one. Yeah, like right here. And then if you can ask the council members to stand up as well. You see yourselves on TV later? No, make sure you're close.
Make sure you can see yourself.
One, two, three.
Awesome. Congratulations. So just so you guys know, we have other businesses to take care of. You're welcome to stay if you'd like to. But I'm sure you got other things to do. All right, the next recognition I'd like to give, and you know, it's always important to acknowledge and thank those that are doing some amazing work in the community. And, you know, we come from a very generous place with big hearts. And I had the opportunity to see all of it in action once again. And as mayor, I want to make sure that we take a moment, reflect, and thank those that are, that have done some amazing things for our kids in the community. So in Santa Paula, there'll be no kid that goes without a, without a holiday present or a hot meal or a meal or support because we have a generous and we have a caring power of communities that comes together to support our community members that are most in need. And so I want to take a moment to first acknowledge the Rotary Club of Santa Paula because they did Christmas baskets to nearly, I think, 400, 400, nearly 400? And over 400. And these are baskets, and they have their, their ducks in a row in the sense of it's very well organized. I'm sure you didn't get there overnight, but you all come together for a good cause. And I want to recognize the Rotary Club. In particular, I'd like to bring up the following individuals. Lisa Tate Zory. I'm gonna ask the vice mayor to help me out with this one. Actually, you're a Rotaryian, aren't you?
Are you a Rotaryian?
I am.
I'm gonna ask Councilmember Cornejo. Ms. Jenny Arana. Brittany Boswellasky. So this is the chair, the vice chair, right? Jenny, could you help too? And this one is for the entire Rotary Club. So I'm also gonna invite those Rotarians who are in the room to please stand together in unison for the photo. But I'd like to give an opportunity for the Rotary leaders who led the Christmas tree, the Christmas basket, can program an opportunity to share a little bit about, you know, the why.
Sure. Well, first of all, what an amazing community, so giving in so many ways. This was funded by the community, so through donations. And it was, it came together because of volunteers. Nobody got paid to do this. So all giving, all amazing, wonderful people. And it was so great to be able to hand out toys to people. I mean, it was just so much fun. So, and thank you for recognizing this amazing program.
Any other comments, ladies?
I would like to say that it's a community effort. Not only it was Rotary that held the event, but the Optimist Club always helps. What other groups? The Leos Interact, FFA. Gabby, we would partner up with Gabby when she, you know, so I could just, the list goes on and on. So it's not only Rotary, but it's a community effort with other organizations and clubs that come together to help our community, and that's what's so amazing about Santa Paula. So thank you. Oh, Santa Paula PD.
Anything else? So you forgot to mention that it's more than just the toys. I saw you gave food out, you gave spirit, we had Santa Claus in the room.
I better plug that. We did, we, we gave away, away multiple chickens, frozen chickens to each family. Along with, there was a lot of food donated by places like Satacuy Lemon. We had mangoes, we had strawberries and avocados that were all donated. So it's just great having everybody come together.
Thank you so much, Lisa. All right, so we're gonna take a photo. If you can ask the, any other Rotarians in the room to join us for a photo real quick. And my final recognition for the day, and it's gonna start our year, right? Because we have so much good in our community. But it's the people that make this place, a better place for everybody. I'd like to invite, I know him as Gabby Gomez. I had to ask for your real name. But if Gabby, you can come to the podium, please, because the mobilization that took place, and that has been taking place by your friends and families, and this goes way back, right?
Long time, yeah. Waters would know. I'm sure Waters knows.
Right?
Yeah.
So there was a Santa Mi toy drive that gave toys at E&amp;D Boutique Hat Company. So, and you came in with the Grinch. You came in with classic cars, lowriders, bikes. You really helped mobilize along with others because it takes a village. But I wanted to make sure that you were recognized here, and I know your parents are here too. So I'd like to give you an opportunity to say a few words. We're very thankful to have your passion and your commitment to helping the kids in Santa Paula.
Oh, I just want to say thank you for, you know, you know, showing us, you know, we appreciate it. But we do it for the kids. Me and Gabby, we did it for nine years together in Police Department for 20 some-plus years. And we get a lot of donations from our friends and family and just make the kids their Christmas and make a good day.
You gave them a great experience, and I saw their faces. I was there taking a video of you guys when the Grinch was coming up, and I mean, it was just a really magical moment. And that's very special for us here in Santa Paula to have all these organizations and people working for the best interest of our kids and their future. So I'd like to present this to you. It has your real name on here. I'm gonna ask the vice mayor to join me. And I also like to, he's not here, he's actually dealing with the cough or a cold. Rick DeLeon and Jessica DeLeon will present this to them at their shop. And then E&amp;D Hat Company. And I have to acknowledge Gabriela Ornelas because he's part of the magic that happens with organizing this. So Gabby, if you can join us as well for a photo. And then I'll give these to them at the shop.
And let's give every folk seven million grand applause.
Si, por favor, que tus padres vengan aquí.
You walk into your toys.
Yeah.
Right? In those trucks?
Yeah, the cars. Come in here. There you are. It's like, where did he go? Come on in, come on in. Tell them. Everybody, all of you, come, you can stand in front of me. No, no, you can come, come sideways, right here in the office. Yeah, you're good right here. Yeah, you're tall. Is everybody in here?
So now we're gonna get to our next item on the agenda, which is item 6C. I'd like to ask our city manager, yes? Would you like to say something? Before he leaves?
Not for audience, but, no, I'd really like to share a personal quick story, and that is, in about 67, 1967 through 71, me and my mom and my two sisters lived over here at 234 South Mill Street, and we received Christmas baskets at least twice, if I recall. And it's a touching moment when the community reaches out to you, and I've never forgotten, and I've also instilled that in my children as well, and they, they try to come back every year to help, and here I am, I guess 50 years later, still helping with the baskets. So thank you, mayor.
I can just say one thing. Like Gibby mentioned, this is my ninth year that I was able to work with him to continue Santa Me. And like, a lot of you that saw the video or saw the posts, the magic is when the cars show up and the trucks show up. That's what really makes it Santa Me, because there's toy drives that happen, and they make a difference, but it's the cars and the bikes that really do it for the kids and the parents. I just wanted to acknowledge all the work that goes into that, and also share that. Why am I blanking? We had a big donor this year that really came through, and I was worried about not having enough, but we were able to, from the toys that came in, serve all the kids that were already registered. Yes, say it again? Throttle Roots. They did a whole run, a bike run just for Santa Me, and also the countywide effort through the Ventura County Fire Spark of Love really showed up for us this year. So I just wanted to share that. It's not just one person that does it, I'm the one that kind of guides us, I guess, but Gibby and everyone else shows up that day and makes it just what it is. So I want to thank E&amp;D and them opening their doors for us and everything we did. Capricho came in with Aguas Frescas and Hot Chocolate. The Grinch was great. Santa showed up. It was a last minute Santa who came through for us, and he was amazing. And the photo booth from Apodaca, who he showed up and he did it completely free for everyone to have a picture of Santa. So it was a lot, and I'm just grateful, and I just wanted to make sure to share a little bit of what made it possible. It's exhausting, and I'm usually out for the rest of the day and then some, but it's worth it, and I look forward to doing it again, and continuing to, to see those faces that we see when all the cars show up. So thank you.
Thank you, council members. All right, city manager's department report, July 24th, December 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been a busy six months that this update covers for the city manager's department, which is made up of our human resource division, our IT division, our fellows, our city clerk, city attorney, and the city manager. I think the most notable effort was pulling together the resources to really help to educate the community about Measure R, which is the one sales tax measure that voters supported in November, and it was a fairly Herculean effort that involved a lot of people in our department and a lot of, a lot of time and effort. So I did want to point that out. Our deputy city manager, and working alongside our fellows, was also quite busy working on the Union Oil Building along with Mr. Barnes, working, of course, on Measure R, working with the Isabella Project, doing some of the research and coordination behind the new trash cans that are coming to our downtown. In fact, they just arrived yesterday, and so we'll be looking to get those put out next month. We gave the council an update on our use of our ARPA funds, and also an update on the council's two-year strategic plan. You'll have another update coming shortly as we go into our new strategic planning effort. On the economic development side, worked alongside the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau to start working on advertisements and more exposure of Santa Paula, and you'll see some of those ads coming out soon. We started a new Santa Paula Business Connect program that's gonna involve both members of the council and the chamber and staff, and really meeting with our various local businesses to better understand what their needs are, and how we can be supportive of them, and help them to thrive here in town. We also do a lot of work with the P-Bid in supporting their various activities and partnerships. On the grant side, we worked on a $280,000 Department of Transportation grant that we received, coordinated a community outreach that also has involved the use of the grant funds we have for the trail extension. And the first kickoff meeting of that was back in November, and we have another, no, early December, and we have another meeting coming up in February. We were hard at work also on legislative affairs, organizing meetings with our congressperson as she came to kind of help celebrate the Mesa Tank Project, and also coordinated with her on some future projects and funding. The vice mayor and mayor went and met with someone from Governor Newsom's office, and then we were active in a lot of either objection letters or support letters around various acts of legislation, and you have those listed in your report. We issued 12 different press releases over those six months, worked with the ad hoc communications committee, especially on the launch now of our upgraded and updated website. And then did a lot of work alongside the Public Works Department in the outreach on Harvard Boulevard, and then, of course, the ribbon cutting associated with that. We've really maximized the use of our, of our fellows, the fellows that we've had an opportunity to work with, our local individuals who are all exceptionally bright and talented, and bring a nice energy to our department. They've been very effective. Not only are most of them bilingual, but they have a skill set that people like myself, part of the baby boomer generation, just don't have. And so it's been really nice to have their help with a lot of social media things, a lot of marketing materials, working on our public service announcements, and just various projects that they are assisting us with. We've now launched a new monthly newsletter, as you're all aware. We have about 800 folks that are signed up every month. We're pushing to increase that number. We're hoping to get to something more in the range of 2,000 to 3,000 subscribers in the, in the coming months. Our clerk was busy with a number of council meetings and other agendas, 21 to be precise, had attended four bid openings, did our annual matiak postings, has been helping with the 700 form filings. We've processed over 115 public records requests during that time, and notices of publication, and, let's see, HR has helped us with a number of employee engagement activity, including flu clinics. We did some lunch and learns, especially around life insurance, organized an annual appreciation lunch for our employees, as well as our annual Halloween event, and our first ever pumpkin painting contest, too. So we try our best, because we have a lot of employees that work very hard, and, and don't have a lot of opportunities for fun to try and create opportunities for camaraderie and activities that are healthy and enjoyable. And then they also helped us successfully recruit a number of positions in finance, building inspector, custodian and facility maintenance worker in Parks and Recreation, new police officer, the promotion of a commander, administrative analyst, management analyst, and street workers and water system workers in public works. And then I would also just note that a good bit of my time and HR's time was focused on recruiting, and then selecting and hiring a new public works director, Dale Gooden, and we're pleased to have him on board. He's been here going on almost three months, and he and his wife have moved into town, so we're glad to have them as residents as well. So a lot, a lot going on. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have. If I missed anything that's derouss, or anyone wants to point out. Otherwise, that concludes our, the highlights of our last six months.
Great. Council members, is there any questions or comments? Okay, great. Thank you so much, city manager. We're gonna invite Director Barnes to please come and share the heart of the work we do right in Parks and Rec.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, council. This evening, I will be reporting on our activity from October through December of last year. Start with our classes, our, our youth classes continue to thrive, and exciting if you ever get a chance to stop by and check them out, some of our pictures of our Taekwondo class, and archery class, and other things. Gymnastics continues to be very popular, 206 participants during that time. Youth sports, we started a volleyball drop-in program for youth and adults at Teague Park, set up volleyball in the park, and kids, kids or adults can come by and play. Had 85 participants for that. And then our flag football and our partnership with the school district, flag football and cheer squad, had 150 participants in cheer, and 270 youth participating in flag football, and it culminated in our bowl games at the end of the season. Our youth center continues to be open and serve the youth at the Las Piedras Youth Center. Happy to announce, too, that we have extended our partnership with the school district now to, they bring twice, and I think we've expanded to even three times a week now, they're bringing youth from the Aspire Program over to the youth center to participate. So about 10 or 15 kids come two or three times a week with a staff member. Our staff collaborates with their staff member as well to come up with craft ideas and programming for the month, so it's a collaborative effort with the school district. We intend to do the same. We're still working to open up a youth center a few days a week on the, at the community center, at the cultural arts building, and we're gonna do the same collaboration with the school district there as well. Our Yara Program, the Youth Apprenticeship Readiness Accelerator, as I reported last time, we had a great graduation and finished Cohort One. Cohort Two will begin February 3rd. So we'll be, I believe, it's at the end of this month, June, January 30th, I believe, we're having our orientation with 12 youths, and then they'll start the actual cohort on the 3rd. This cohort will be longer, because it's after school in the summer, we're able to do cohort all day long, eight hours a day, so it's a shorter time length. So this one will actually be longer, because they'll just be coming after school, but we'll feed them in the evenings. We'll have an instructor through the partnership with Launa, and we seem to be set to go. Just a copy of the flyer that goes out. And then also want to announce our partnership with Goodwill. We have Ventura County Youth Careers, they've launched a program. So we actually are hosting a, one of their, what I'm looking for, interns, there you go, escaped to me for a minute. We're hosting one of their interns who works at the community center a few times a week, and we anticipate having two more interns also come and join us. They're available for other departments as well, if there's a need. So it's a great program. They pay 100% of their salaries while they earn some, learn some skills. And then City Court continues to thrive. Over this last period, they had 2,300 hours worked, 122 projects completed. So we count projects. If one of the City Court leader trainees works in scene nutrition, helps deliver meals for the day, or helps prepare meals in scene nutrition, that's a project. When two of them go down to Main Street and spend three hours down there doing litter, or emptying trash, or help with graffiti removal, that's a project. So they completed 122 projects. And even this morning, we are experimenting with them, learning to power wash. So they were downtown, power washing sidewalks from 4:00 AM to 7:00 AM this morning with our staff. We had four meter trainees working with two of our staff and teaching them how to, how to use the power washing equipment. So that's them cleaning an alley. The picture you see there, they hit, I believe, every alley in the city, cleaned them up, and now they're starting the rotation over again, and that was pretty well received. They had, they were coming back to the office and really excited, because residents were coming out and thanking them, giving them waters and things, so they really came back pretty pleased with their efforts. I'm continuing into our adult classes, archery program, zumba and yoga. Zumba, all three of those adult classes, they started as, if you will, senior classes, but we had some adults that wanted to also attend, and our seniors, you know, thought it'd be great to allow all adults just to attend the classes during the day, so they're no longer just senior classes, they're adult programming. And then our adult sports, we have a pickleball drop-in program at the community center. Staff lines the auditorium every Monday, so we have a morning session and an evening session. They actually line it, put out the equipment, and we get pickleball players playing indoors. It's a really good spot in the summer when it gets warm, because it's probably the only air-conditioned pickleball court I know around, so that's a pretty cool spot. And then our kickball program had 60 particip, 60 participants, and again, as I mentioned, we offer drop-in volleyball as well. And then we did host a Santa Paula Beautiful Day, focused on the, on the Baranca and the community center and things. It was really well. I believe we had a little over 120 volunteers that day, so it was a good day. Got a lot of mulch spread, and a lot of litter picked up, and things of that nature. And then getting into some of our holiday events, hosted a Halloween carnival again this year, partnering too with different car clubs. They did, they do a trunk or treat, and then we had activities for the, for the families, games, partnered to do what we call haunted hallways, our version of a haunted house throughout the community center. Really successful. We don't really take a head count of who's showing up, but it's always super busy. No cost to any families except for haunted hallways. That was an entry fee for that, because we do share that money with some of the groups that help us. We, again, have other organizations in the community that help us as well, Odd Fellows, Optimist Club, Santa Paula High School ASB, the PTA, and the Spark Club come and help us either with the haunted hallway, or preparing food, or giving away free popcorn, and those types of things. So really cool, really successful. Participated in the holiday parade. We're always excited to escort Santa and Mrs. Claus. It's kind of become a tradition, and so it's always neat to see them there, and we enjoy the efforts of the chamber putting on the parade and our participation. And then this year, we did a Santa's Christmas kickoff at the Train Depot. It's kind of meant for like a kickoff of the Train Depot, even though it's already lit, but of the music that goes along with it, the light show, but had a lot of local vendors and treats and food and things. But it had a lot of local vendors and treats and food and things. I spent about an hour, hour and a half there and it was, seemed to be well attended, attended. The vendors seemed to be happy and sold out of a lot of things, but it was a really cool Then our Santa's pancake breakfast, families can come and enjoy a picture with Santa and Mrs. Claus and then have pancake breakfast. That was again well attended as well, no cost to families to come participate. What's really neat, and I think our City Manager even pointed it out, you see families come and like that's their family photo, right? They show up either in their pajamas or they're dressed in their best for that. Some of them have been doing it for years, that was their tradition to come every year and take that picture. And so it was really exciting and we had groups that helped us again with that, Odd Fellows and Optimists and everybody coming in and helping us with pancakes or helping us clean tables and we really appreciate their efforts. And then our Santa tours, which has become popular, I believe this is the fourth year we've done it, maybe the fifth year we've been doing our Santa tours. Last year, the weather didn't really participate, agree with us very much, we were only able to go out one night because it rained. I think one, it didn't rain one night, it rained three out of the four nights. This year, the weather cooperated with us, but it's become very popular. Starting in November, a little before Thanksgiving, we already started getting calls like, where are the routes, when is Santa coming? So we know that everyone's anticipating it. Our Santa Paula Proud Program continues to thrive, our overall, so we have Santa Paula Beautiful, but we do have a volunteer program outside of that. We try and track all our volunteers, whether they volunteer to teach a class like bone builders or our coaches that help with our youth programs. So we currently have 284 volunteers registered. There was 343 and a half hours tracked this last three months of volunteer service. I will stand before you and tell you, we're still not, I don't believe we're still tracking them 100% accurately, we need to really rein in some of the other volunteer hours, but we're getting there. Having this software has helped us, so getting everyone signed up and in the, getting used to inputting their hours and tracking them has been helpful, but we have a little ways to go. But during that time, if you equate that, that's a little over $11,000 of service to our community, so it's an awesome thing. So picture on the top are our bone builders instructors. If you ever have a chance, come by and participate in a bone builders class one time. It's, for us, it's not just about the class. Bone builders is a really unique class that seniors do with lightweights and it helps with their balance and bone density and things. But it's also about community and bringing them together and they start building this community amongst each other, so it's really a nice class. It's a, it's a class, generally when you start a new class, it takes you 60 days to like really start building momentum. That class, we started that before COVID and we had 25 people registered and it lasted a couple of months and COVID hit and everything shut down. And then we were only able to start it back up here in the last six months or so. I mean, and immediately we've got 20 people in the class, so it's just a very popular class that the seniors really appreciate. Going into senior services, we currently have over 250 seniors participating in various programs, like enhanced fitness, mat yoga, chair yoga, creative writing or knitting club is always popular. And then zumba and our bone builders program, as I mentioned, we continue to include field trips and movies and luncheons that we host in the auditorium. We had our luncheon today, again, over 100 participants there, good music. I was able to have lunch with our musicians today and talk to them a little bit, so they love, they love coming to the senior center and playing for our seniors as well. Then our senior nutrition program, these are, it's nice to know that we're serving meals, we've, year to date, we're at a little over, you know, 4,400 meals. But this is a stark difference than to what we usually serve. And I just want to point it out, as you all know, there were some cuts to the program over this last year. In, in a normal year, halfway through, we'd be at 10,000 meals right now. We serve over 20,000 meals historically a year. So numbers are down, we're serving meals three days a week. It looks like we're going to be able to add some deliveries, some more meals to our homebound delivery program, so we're continually looking for opportunities. And we will continue, we will grow those numbers. We've been told there's some additional changes coming from DC AAA as far as senior nutrition, so we're waiting to hear what those are. But we need to continue to have discussions to work through how to fund this, whether it's through fundraising or other options. We're, we're looking at our budget, as I had mentioned to you, as staff, to see if there's savings and how we can add meals. But this is just a stark difference. Our staff works really hard, these are hot meals every day that we serve, these aren't frozen meals, I mean, we give a frozen meal when we know we're going to be closed, but our staff's serving prepared meals every day and then we take them out to homebound or they're serving them there for the seniors. So to reduce it to where we are right now is really a stark difference, so I just wanted to point that out to you all. And then staff is continuing to work along with the City Manager's office on the Santa Paula Master Plan for Aging. We've had a number of community meetings, there's one coming up tomorrow. We are getting close to finishing the tour, they've done quite a few, the three listed there, we did October 8th, November 4th and December 5th. You could see, pretty well attended, if you look at the picture there, I mean, they're pretty well attended meetings. We will be bringing that before you as they kind of put that master plan together. We anticipate bringing it before you and sharing it with you in May, which is Older Americans Month, so we thought it'd be timely to bring that to you then. But staff has been working on that over the last, probably about eight to nine months at this point. And then moving into Parks and Facilities, a couple highlights that the facilities team worked on, but obviously does not cover everything that they've been part of. But holiday lighting, when you see the decorations at the Train Depot at our different facilities, that's our facility, facilities team that does that. Park lighting enhancements, we have installed some LED solar lighting at Mills Park and Overgun Park, seemed to be pretty happy with it, so we might start looking at that on other areas, especially where we know we were missing some lighting in the parks. Community Center kitchen upgrades, I had mentioned that we were, we did receive some funding through DC AAA for some improvements, you all approved it for us to go forward with that, like purchasing a vehicle, stoves and ovens, and there's a picture on the bottom of the, some of the equipment. You can see on the left, equipment that had been there for probably about 50 years and then new equipment on the right that's been installed and has been in use, so. Glad to have it. And then did some repairs of the oil, oil museum fence repairs, needed some, some love and some care. Santa Paula Beautiful Event, our facilities team and Parks and Facilities team is very involved in that event. Various Mill Park upgrades, cleared hillside of overgrown bush and cleaned up numerous homeless encampments up and down. And we cleared some brush to just help get a better view of what's going on. Teague Park Tree Maintenance, pruned 36 trees to enhance the health and aesthetics of Teague Park. And then our facilities team, most notably our supervisor, Ulysses Valenzuela, has helped with our city core program, helping provide projects and some oversight and training when they go out. So we have a coordinator that oversees it and does some scheduling and he's been helping directly, so we've appreciated that, him and his staff. And then Harding Park Improvements, did some improvements to the ball fields, aerated and fertilized, applied topsoil to some of the fields and aerated and aerated, did both, did both Richard Wees Field and the Tom Moore Field. So during this time, had 2,164 work orders issued, completed 2,160 of them, 253 of those were graffiti related, work orders for graffiti calls. I like to always give you our tree maintenance update, so you know, we planted five, five trees, we had seven, neither removed or fallen, and then we pruned 126 trees over this last three months. I will say, I mentioned this today and I'm going to knock on wood because as soon as you say it, it goes awry. During these windy events that we've had, we've had very, we've had no trees go down during the windy events, I know, I almost don't want to say it, I did something, there we go. We did, we had a couple limbs and things come down, but I, I want to credit it to the tree maintenance that we've been doing over the last couple of years, right? And some of the things we've done, like with the eucalyptus grove and some things, we just haven't seen that same level of issues. Doesn't mean we won't have a tree come down or ever or things won't happen, but we've definitely seen a reduction. And then the Fagan Baranca Park Master Plan, that I also helped to bring, hope to bring to you all sooner than later, we've been working along, as I've mentioned before, landscape architect, we've had a couple of community meetings, plan on, he will be presenting our landscape architect to our Parks and Rec Commission this month. We will hold at least one more community meeting and then hope to at least bring a conceptual design to, in front of you all to get your feedback as well and you can kind of see what the thought is and what we've heard from the community as far as the Baranca. And then just an update on the sports park, as you all know, we've accepted it, November 20th was the last acceptance where we took turf and irrigation. We've taken over maintenance of it, as of January 1, we're thankful for Luis for continuing to do maintenance for us as we kind of transitioned. We, our staff is out there, we have a contractor out there, we've hired a part-time employee that has a lot of experience in park maintenance, especially with the Bermuda grass, so they're out there tending to it. The exciting thing to announce to you all and to the community is that we're going to do a soft opening January 21st. So on Tuesday, it'll be available for the public. We're excited about that, we'll do a grand opening later in the spring and have a celebration as things green up and we warm up a little bit, but we're excited to make it available to the public. The softball field will be being closed for a little bit longer, for a few, few more weeks. We're not going to start renting amenities probably till March 1st, give us a little time to put some things in place like the barbecue pavilions and the field won't be ready to necessarily rent yet. We're still kind of in a potential dormant area for Bermuda, but there's no reason the community can't come and use the park, use the basketball, use the open green space, use the top lot and things, so that will be Tuesday.
I have a quick question for you, Director Barnes. There's been residents that have mentioned that there's folks going in there and lighting fireworks. How are we going to mitigate that in terms of security for the, especially the area that's?
Dirt, yeah. Let me, like all our parks, we don't necessarily have an enforcement arm that's at the parks. I mean, if our staff's there, we'll enforce things or as we do. That's a discussion that I'll need to have with chief and talk about how we can help with that and even look at the park itself and see if we need to put up some.
Security cameras?
Yeah, something that can help us, yeah. But I'll, we'll have that discussion. It's a good discussion to have for all our parks, to be honest with you, and which we have, I mean, there's things that we discussed, but we'll definitely take a look at that. Our community gardens, we have community gardens, there's also, I don't know if this works, it's hard to, see, there's a, there's a community garden section as part of this park. We're not ready to open that yet, as far as usability, but we do anticipate having quite a few box plots and things there at the, at this space. There's a two design plots for that with water and access, just got to kind of work through the programming part and managing it, but we do intend on using that space. So what we did leading up to this, though, is we opened a community garden at the community center. We have six plots here and four more that Yara built out for people to use. We charge a nominal fee of $25 for six months, I think, to rent a spot, that includes their water and access. They can renew it for six months if they choose to. And then after a year, if there's anyone else on the list, they kind of got to give it up so that other people can have a spot. As we build out more plots, we hope to be able to, you know, have more space and not have to turn them over as quickly. But at the community center, it's, it's been a success, we have some good gardening going on there and it was a good pilot program, I guess I can share with you, our rules and the things that we kind of put in place there and we'll, we'll use that for the sports park and other areas as well. Administrative things that we've worked on, we continue to work with RWC on various projects, CIP projects, Boys and Girls Club kitchen remodel, that's going to be kicked off, not the remodel itself, but we're going to kick it off with a meeting at the end of the month with the Boys and Girls Club and RWC, myself and others. The security fencing that you can see is going in here, police station remodel is well underway and should be done here soon. Teague Park Restrooms is still underway, Mill Park, Park and Recreation, we're putting a storage building in next to the cultural arts building or to move the generator that's currently out, that big generator for the, for the water recycling inside, we're going to be putting a storage unit so we can move out. Then the Union Oil Building repairs are underway, we're getting ready to write some RFPs for some of those items that need attention that we brought before you. And then the community center generators are completed and I'm happy to note that last week when we needed them and the power went down, they turned on automatically and ran, so they work. You don't know they really work until you need them to work, but I can report they worked. We had power. In fact, I think the power went off around 5:00, Mr. City Manager, if I'm wrong, about 5:00, 5:15 in the morning? And you, Mr. Valenzuela and I were texting each other at like 5:30, like, are they working? Can someone go look and see if they're working? So we wanted to see if the generators were fired off.
So prior to, prior to this generator, we would be without power.
We would just be down.
Progress.
Yep, so it was really nice to know. We, staff continues to work to negotiate lease terms with potential users along with the city ma, help from City Manager's office for the Union Oil Building and Mr. Mason's office as well. Staff participated in the, continues to participate in the fee study efforts led by our finance department. We had staff participate in various professional developments. And as you know, we've made it over, I think, four years now, we give out an award in our department every year. It, staff is nominated by their colleagues in our department and then as management, we, out of the nominations, kind of choose, pick the winner. But we, we honor Mel Elhawry, who was the first Parks and Rec Director for our city, so we've called it the Mel Elhawry Shining Star Award. And this year's recipient is Marco Perez, one of our facility maintenance workers and we'll be recognizing him at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting as well this month. So, and Nina, as well, to his right, our left in the picture was last year's winner and so we've made it a tradition now that last year's winner kind of presents this year's award, so. It was, it was done at our holiday party. And then just some numbers for our rentals for the year, different reservations, you can see that the parks are being well-used again. Harding Park, 231 reservations, about Teague and Las Piedras at 86 and 74, so. The number here, just as a correction, because there's a typo, special events, we did have three special events, I don't know why it didn't make it on our thing, but we did have a few special event permits and then a couple films actually come through as well for film permits. And then just coming soon, really quick, youth basketball, starting at our first games last weekend, again in conjunction with the school district and our partnership, we're starting a micro soccer program in March at the schools for the youth. Micro soccer is going to be like a five-on-five, no goalie, let the kids play. Track and field will start, we have our Arbor Day scheduled, will be scheduled for April, Easter, Earth Day into May, Older Americans Month is in May, and then we have grid two pruning happening soon, and that's our grid, if you can see that to the right there, a few hundred trees. And I will mention that, based on our budget and our four-year plan for tree pruning, we thought it would kind of be an eight-year pruning process, but we actually were able to get through all of grade one last year. So we are on schedule and I just want to thank staff for being creative and, you know, working with our contractors, but also we have two staff on that have tree pruning experience, so they're able to kind of do some of it in-house as well, so we're actually able to get through all of grade one. And with that, I'm done and I'll take any questions you might have.
Very thorough report. Council members have comments or questions? Council member across the way.
I think for now, I just have one question. When you were just given everything that's been going on in Southern California and I saw the picture of the giant piles of mulch, have we, and maybe there's, it may end up being more of a comment than a question, but just, I've, I've been thinking, I know that for homeowners, there's certain spaces, we're moving forward, you're not supposed to put down mulch. And so it's just something maybe for us to think about whether or not there are specific areas that due to fire concerns, we might need to use a different ground cover other than mulch, so I guess it's maybe something to think about.
It's kind of tricky, we're required to put down a certain amount of mulch every year through Cal cycle and things, but we also have a meeting next week with Ventura Fire Safe Council to talk about fire hardening, not only for residents but for us, so we'll get some good feedback as well.
And it might be something to ask them about, too, saying, you know, if they, if they know any best practices of how we balance that, I mean, because I know that we, we have requirements through the state, but then also there's other requirements about like not putting it in certain areas and so how we balance that and just if there're, specifically if there's places where the mulch is right up against the buildings, that maybe we need to rethink some of that, because I think that's going to be changing in the next couple of years in state law anyway, so, or at least for homeowners, so. Anyway, just something for us to.
Thank you for that, definitely a discussion we'll have.
Any other council members? Council member, Cornejo?
Just a quick thank you to your department and all you do. I've said it before, but I can't be said enough how grateful we are for all the people that your department touches and improves the quality of life for all ages in our communities, so we just let, let the department know, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Director Barnes, for that report, amazing work.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to continue on the agenda. City Council reports, I'm going to start with Council member Crossway.
All right. So the first thing, before I get to the meetings that I attended, I did want, kind of as a comment, but more as a question for maybe the city attorney, I know that we're going through our municipal code update and part of our municipal code is the fireworks ordinance that we passed over three years ago. But I'm wondering, you know, sort of where are we at and like how far out is that? And is that maybe something that we can look at sooner rather than later? Or what would be the process for looking at that? I mean, as the mayor said earlier, there's other, you know, things to be looked at in relation to fireworks, but the ordinance is something that the council put in place. And so I don't know if we can do, maybe have you take a look at that sooner rather than later and see if there's things that we should be, like talk with the chief, is it working? Is it not working? Are there edits that we need to make to it to accomplish its goals more effectively if it's not?
Yes, thank you, Council member Crossway. We are, we have an order of code sections that we are going through in this project. And one of the earlier ones is a section relating to penalties. And when we are looking at that, we will also make that in connection with penalties related to fireworks.
Yeah, I think, because I think if we can, hopefully that'll come sooner rather than later, just because it's, it's very much, I mean, I, we probably were all hearing them just even this last weekend. It used to be there'd be a few fireworks on 4th of July, maybe a day after, maybe a day before. And now it's like all the time. And so I'm just concerned whether or not we have the right tools. So, all right. Moving on to the meetings that I have attended, at the, mayor and I had an economic development standing committee meeting. We had a presentation from Bruce Stensley from the county. I've seen a lot of the information before, but it's always good to relook at the economic update as a foundation for the conversation about economic development. And the two big takeaways were, needs in the county, in the county were housing that people can afford, given the wages that they make. And then also people having good paying jobs so that they can live, work and thrive in the county. And then I did want to let any business owners out there know that if you aren't already signed up to get the emails on it, there is a business roundtable on January 30th at 9:00 AM. And we are hoping for that to be a very interactive experience. So if any of you know a business owner, that you think their voice would benefit that conversation, please let them know it's 9:00 AM at the little conference room that's there at the Glen Tavern. And so we're hoping that'll be a productive morning. And then at our local area formation commission meeting this morning, most of it was routine business, but there, we were informed that the county board of supervisors made a decision on Tuesday to form, or do some sort of exploring of the feasibility of a countywide utility district that could, would potentially own and manage the power lines and other power-related infrastructure in Ventura County. Whether that will become a thing or not remains to be seen. They just made the initial decision to look into whether or not it would be feasible. It would not be run by the county. If it were to happen, it would be a separate joint powers authority that was a nonprofit entity that was tasked with that. And so whether or not it will go anywhere, I don't know, but I did want to let you all know if you hadn't already heard, because I hadn't seen anything in the news cycle about that. But they did, there's a couple supervisors that sit on LAFCO and that was mentioned because ultimately if it went forward, it would become, it would be something that would come before LAFCO. And so they wanted to give us a heads up on that. Because they, the board of supervisors shares the frustration that us and many of our colleagues or residents have had around the sometimes lack of communication over the last couple of weeks or frustrated communication. And so they just want to look at all of their options. And then at the Ventura County Transportation Commission meeting, we were informed that February 4th, which is Rosa Parks' birthday, there will be free rides on all transit in Ventura County. So if you know anyone who's never taken a public transit and is interested, encourage them to take a bus on February 4th in honor of Rosa Parks and also to experience for free our Ventura County Transit. Also, you might see or have seen on some of the big blue buses that go between the cities, which is the Ventura County inner city, there's artwork on some of those buses. And they had an artwork competition with the Boys and Girls Clubs around Ventura County. And we do have, we did have one, they only use first names, so I don't know his last name, but there was a kid Lorenzo from our local club that was one of the artists that has his art on one of the buses in the county. And then we were informed that there's an attempt, they're trying to restart the Moore Park to Goleida commuter train that went up in the morning. It had started right before 2020 and then when everything shut down and ridership dropped off, it was paused. And so they're trying really hard to get a pilot project up and running again. The goal is to try to get that restarted by fall of 2025. So I will keep you all posted as those plans come together. They don't always start when they're hoping, but that's what they're hoping right now. And so it would start in Goleida, or sorry, start in Moore Park, go to, through Ventura and then up on up to Goleida. And they're hoping to time it so that it, the problem they had last time was it started in LA. So by the time it got to Ventura County, it was often way behind already. And so then it, people were having a harder time utilizing it because it had more of an opportunity that was going to be delayed. And so they're really hoping that this Moore Park to Goleida will be more efficient and they'll be able to run it closer to on time on a more regular basis. And then one last thing, the, oh, at the VCTC meeting, the other thing that was brought up was the need for, because again, what we've experienced over the last couple of weeks, we also in town had many stoplights that were out. And so one of the less expensive things that can help alert people to the fact that there is a traffic signal that's out, especially if they're from out of town and coming through, is there's a reflective yellow, it's kind of, it looks like tape, I don't know if it is tape, but it looks like reflective yellow tape, that they're starting to put all around a lot of the stoplights in the county. And so that way, at least as you're coming up to it, your headlights catch it and you go, oh, there's something up there. And so it, that could be something, would be good if we could look into, are there some things like that or some low-cost ways that we can flag those so that when they go out during the day, it's not as big a deal? But at night, if you're not from town, there's some of those intersections that it would, it's dark enough if the power's out, that people might just fly through those intersections. And so it might be something safety-wise that would be a lower cost. I know that ideally you have backup generators on all of those, but it might be something that, as we look at our options, might be something to look into. And then there, you know, there were all kinds, oh, the other piece, like there are all kinds of events, but I won't name all of those. But I will name that the, our council member Cornejo and I did have an update on the negotiations with people's self-help around their, what's it, their, what they're asking for in terms of fee thing, yeah, for deferrals and, or funds from the, or funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or different things. So that is an ongoing conversation. It's gone three times, I think, to the Affordable Housing Task Force for their recommendation. And so I think we're hopefully getting closer to having something that we can bring back to the full council. Thank you.
Thank you, Council member Cornejo.
Thank you, mayor. And happy new year to everyone. Hope everybody had a lovely holiday and a good rest. First thing that I was going to mention was our negotiating meeting for the ad hoc development on people's self-help. So we've addressed that already. On the 23rd, I participated in a Zoom with staff, just getting updates on the Union Oil Building. More to come on that through staff. On the 8th of January, I was sworn in by Zoom for the VRSD, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. So that was kind of funny to do the swearing in by Zoom, but I'm, I'm assuming it's legit. First meeting tomorrow. The next day, all these acronyms, VCOG, Ventura Council of Governments, attended that. The council formed a standing committee for broadband and named five members and they are representatives from each, from four cities, which are Thousand Oaks, Oxnard, Ojai, Santa Paula. And so the representative, representative from Santa Paula will be on that standing committee. And so I will be on that standing committee and as well the supervisor on that council who is at this time is Janice Parven will be on. And so, and the cities were selected because they were at the locations where a lot of the transmissions connect. And so even though Thousand Oaks was mentioning that they're well-covered by broadband, they still were at a location that the connections will come into our county through there. So they wanted a wide representation that way. Attended P-Bid, another acronym, Property Business Improvement District, the downtown district today. And just really pleased to see that the facade program is moving along and that the trashcans have arrived. So it was a big day for that. And then I attended last week, council member or vice mayor Juarez was unable to attend the senior advisory committee. So I attended and then also have asked mayor to be appointed as an alternate so that I could be a backup for that committee because I enjoy participating in that. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council member Arnellis.
So I attended my first citizen core meeting and that was via Zoom. Since it was my first meeting, I don't really have much to report other than that it was nice to hear so many people from different agencies or groups come together locally for the meeting and hear of all the work that is put into this group and to make sure that there's clear communication and that we can be best prepared for anything that comes through or any emergencies or disasters that were faced as a community. So I'm just happy to be on it and it was nice to see some familiar faces and I look forward to learning more and the people that I don't know getting to work with them.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, mayor.
Well, I attended my last Ventura Regional Sanitation District meeting on the 19th VRSD and it was great to see every two years, there's a changeover of representatives from around the county. And so Council member Cornejo and Arnellis will be working in that aspect. And there's going to be some changes in the general management, so you'll be able to assist in selecting a new general manager. I assisted with the Rotary baskets for four, four days in December and as you heard earlier, it's a, it's a big group, community effort with just even the school and everybody getting involved to help our residents in Santa Paula. And I believe the chief walked out, but I wanted to acknowledge him and the officers because at the end of the day on Sunday, or whatever day that the last day falls on, we usually have baskets that are not picked up, whether it's people vacationing or don't get a text or don't have the ability to get down there. And the chief has, and the police room has historically delivered anywhere between 12 and 17. Well, this year, I think there was 30 that they had to deliver. So they went out after we were done and they continued with the work, came in officers and the explorers. So I wanted to thank the chief, but I think I saw him walk out. I had the opportunity to work on the rose parade float on behalf of the Oddfellows. If you ever get a chance, it's quite an experience to do it. And then of course, a few days later, I saw what part I worked on. That was good. You know, with these fires, it's, it took a while, but they finally, they, Southern California Edison finally put together a Zoom call for elected representatives and officials from cities. And the mayor and I got on there Monday and, and then it was on their, well, I think they were going to not be on Tuesday because of the wind event. And I think today, Friday, we're going to be on. It was a little contentious at first because there's a lot of people that are affected by the fires and there are not enough answers. And they acknowledged that Edison is not doing the best job of updating the maps, contacting, making resources available and of course, the lack of notification of when the power's going to go off and more importantly, when is it, when is it going to come back on? So they're working on it and hopefully they'll do a better job. And that's my report. Mayor, unless you want to add some more on that as well?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So my report's going to first and foremost start by thanking those that are fighting the fires, those first responders, firefighters. You know, it breaks our heart to see such tragedy. We're all, you know, one or two degrees of separation, connected. We might have family, friends in parts that were impacted. In our city alone, we had parts of our community that didn't have power to, you know, more than two days. And so that has an impact. And so we do want to, as much patience as we want to have on certain things, you know, we rely on a lot of electricity technology. And so we are going to, I'm hoping that we could figure out ways to address those, mitigate those situations that happen when someone runs out of power and then what, right? So they can't get the alerts because their phones dead. So I think we're going to be a lot more proactive. We have set communications mechanisms in place and, and that information was able to go out. I would, our community continues to face tragedies and I would, if I didn't honor some of the lives that have been lost. In particular, Carlos Villanueva, who was walking, 877, was hit by a car at 3:00 in the afternoon and unfortunately he passed away. We had a shooting victim, George Tuma, unfortunately passed away. We had two young lives, Carlos Perez at 39 and Maria Seja 31, who were hit by a car on the 126 at 2:00 in the afternoon on Christmas Eve. You know, I'd be adjourning the meeting tonight in honor of Carlos Perez and Maria Seja and those that have lost their lives. But I take this moment to say that, you know, life is precious and we just got to slow down because many times we're such in a rush or distracted that we're not paying attention. And so let's do a better job, everyone, in, in, in taking the time and slow down so that we can avoid tragedies in our community. So again, our sincerest condolences to their families that have been impacted. I want to wish Reverend Dr. Betty Stapleford the very best as she transitions into retirement. There'll be a reception this Sunday at the Unitarian, Universal Unitarian Church in her honor. Council member Juarez was appointed the liaison to the senior advisory, I'm sorry, council member Juarez was appointed the liaison to the senior advisory committee last month. I do want to recognize that council member Cornejo has agreed, thank you for stepping up to serve as the alternate. I want to remind Santa Paula, please sign up for the email. It's working, we're getting more information out. That's important because we look at the response rate of 800 people that have signed up so far. And we have, what, 80, 90% rate of opening? So people are hungry for the information. So please sign up, go to our website. Again, also, we never know what's going to happen. We have these severe weather conditions that are impacting our lives. So please go to se.gov, I'm sorry, dot com, sign up for alerts so that you're up to date and you're not getting information directly from social media as your valid source of information, but you're getting it straight from the source. It's really important to get those alerts and know how the system works so that if that happens again, we can easily mobilize as needed. Again, shop locally when you can and support our local businesses. And I mentioned some of these things as mayor because these are things that, you know, residents also reach out to me and tell me about. So I'm using this opportunity to provide that information to our residents. Please keep your dog on a leash, very important. We all have to work in, together regarding fire prevention. And in particular, we are in a high-risk fire area, which means that it's a spark and then entire community. and then entire communities can be gone. We've seen it on TV affecting other communities. So it's very, very important to not use fireworks. The Oaks is an area that is, that could light a spark there, and the whole entire community would be gone. And so please, you're lighting a firework for what purpose? For fun? For Mother's Day? For a holiday? We don't need that in our community. Por favor, no us en cuentes. Es muy importante. Estamos en una área que podemos estar afectados por incendios. Por favor, prevenir. Es importante prevenir esas situaciones. Hemos visto lo que puede pasar en otras áreas. Lo que está pasando en los ángeles puede pasar aquí. So again, please, if you know of anyone using a firework, talk to them. They're a family, they're a friend, talk to them. We have to prevent fires in our community and be preventative. Be good to yourself and to others. We're starting a new year. There's a lot going on in the world. And all we can do is control how we react to it. And so this is council's commitment to ensuring that we are receptive to the needs of our community. We have a lot of good stuff happening this year, but there's a lot of challenges. So I'm looking forward to working with our council as we mitigate situations that happen in the future that could be surprises that happen that we have no control over. And so again, that's the, I'll end with that. So be good to yourself and others in our community, and be a good neighbor. Next on the agenda, we have the consent calendar. Are there any items? Oh, we're going to skip that. Yeah, you're good? All right. We're going to go to consent calendar. Are there any issues in regards to pulling items or have questions? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I just would move to approve the consent calendar. I did send to the city clerk a couple of minor corrections that were really not substantive, but with that only, I would move to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? No, see no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, exciting stuff up next. Item 10A, discussion regarding the creation of a measure R, Sales Tax Oversight. Before we start that conversation, we have six public comments. I'm going to ask that we get the presentation first because some questions could be answered, and then we'll go into public comment. And before you begin, I want to say on behalf of the city council that we want to thank the voters of Santa Paula for making this possible because having the resources to solve problems puts us in a better position than most. And so with that said, thank you again to the voters, and Jonathan, take it away.
All right. Well, good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, and residents that are tuning in this evening. Staff comes before you this evening with a discussion and a report on Measure R Oversight Committee conversation. The recommendation this evening is to receive and file a report and then provide direction regarding the creation and appointment of a Sales Tax Oversight Committee, and additionally, consider any additional related actions as council might suggest. So to provide a quick background on Measure R, Measure R is a one-cent general sales tax measure that was passed by the voters, as the mayor had mentioned, on November 5, 2024, with approximately a 60% voter approval rating. There is no sunset date on the measure until, at what time maybe voters would decide to end it. The anticipated projected revenue for this measure, based on historical knowledge related to Measure T, is approximately $4 to $4.5 million annually for local services. As I had mentioned earlier, it is a general sales tax measure. When it was brought to the voters after an extensive and robust engagement effort in the previous year leading up to the ballot being put before the voters, the community was surveyed, and several of the items that the community came back with as their top priorities were accelerating the repair in streets and potholes, maintaining 911 emergency response, preventing sinkholes, and repairing of sidewalks, retaining local business, and addressing homelessness as some of the examples. I did put up next to this the Measure T because, leading up to this discussion this evening, I'm sure that council's going to have questions on the Measure T process and what that looked like. It is a very similar sales tax measure, so I thought I would share that information in background, especially for those who are also listening in this evening. Measure T, in contrast, was passed in 2016 with a 58% voter approval rating. There is a sunset date on Measure T unless the voters wish to extend that, and that ends in 2036. Additionally, it does bring in currently anywhere between $4 to $4.00 million annually for local services. And it is also a general sales tax measure. However, when that measure was put forth to the voters, community priorities that were addressed in the particular ballot measure language was to support public safety, including our police department, streets, and then youth programs. Additionally, to provide some comparisons, key accountability provisions are included in Measure R, and those did go to the voters and were part of that ballot measure. Funds are restricted to only being used in Santa Paula, and that applies to both measures. Measure R and T requires the public disclosure of spending and then also annual independent financial audits. I did want to pause here because here's where there's one big difference compared to Measure T. And I just wanted to make it clear this evening for our discussion. So in the Measure T actual ballot measure language that did go to the voters, there was actually a provision requiring a five-person oversight committee to review and audit expenditures of revenues. And that is not currently in Measure R. Additionally, for comparison, so far, city council directive related to Measure R, when it went to the voters, council you met earlier on October 2, before the election, gave staff direction to come back, as we are this evening, with options for a committee. Under Measure T, the council directive prior to going to the ballot is that while the ballot provision called for an audit and review only of the funds related to Measure T, council did adopt more stringent committee guidelines to additionally empower the committee to come to council, making recommendations on expenditures to council. And that is really where we are at today with the Measure T committee. The Measure T committee gets together annually and multiple times throughout the year and actually provides, they listen to the department directors, receive recommendations, and then make those recommendations to the council. I wanted to provide in this next slide, kind of a, kind of a miscommunicate, you know, the way Measure T is set up, it is really called right now the Measure T Oversight Committee. But the way it was actually laid out and carried out per council's direction back in 2016 is it's actually really more so of an advisory committee than an oversight committee. An oversight committee is really about transparency and accountability to how the funding has been utilized, and really making sure that it aligns with the voters' expectations. Oversight typically takes place after an expenditure, not beforehand. And really, the committee is typically tasked with verifying that the funds have been utilized the way the voters intended. An advisory committee, on the other hand, is essentially where we're at right now with the Measure T committee. They're providing recommendations to council based on community input or feedback that they receive in the community. They really act as like the bridge between the city council and the public, ensuring that the public's concerns are met. And they're really focused on guiding decisions to meet the community needs. That's going to be, this is going to be possibly an important topic tonight is to really distinguish what route council might wish to take moving forward with the committee. So some of the options that are provided this night in your report that I'm going to cover right now, the first option would be to expand the Measure T Oversight Committee. The current structure of the committee is we have five members representing different areas of the community, business, civic, senior, youth, and at-large groups. And again, their focus is on the public safety, streets, and youth programs. The advantages of expanding the Measure T committee is really, you already have a proven framework that we've been utilizing for several years. There's a process, there's processes in place, and it really, it reduces the administrative workload because it's already baked in. Streamlined communication is also one of the advantages to basically expanding the committee, including Measure R. But there are some challenges that would be present in combining the two. And the real challenge is how would you redefine or consider the scope of how the Measure, how the Measure T committee and the Measure R committee would work together? Considering what I just shared with you regarding more of Measure T's role these days as an advisory committee as opposed to strictly an oversight committee. Additionally, there could be increased workload for the existing members. You only have a five-member committee right now, and they would have to address the additional funding sources in some of those categories that I mentioned before. Steps to making this particular option move forward would be amending the operational guidelines that council's already put forth, expand the membership, provide training, and really bring those, those pieces back to you. The second option could be to create a completely separate Measure R Oversight Committee. The advantages of that is there's much more clear focus on Measure R and the funds for Measure R. And it also assists with allocations on the intentions, the voter intentions, related to Measure R. One of the pieces is that we would be able to utilize most likely a lot of the pieces from the Measure T policies that have been put in place, but it would still be able to keep the Measure R monies and those processes distinct. Again, the challenge is with this particular option, again, is going to come down to defining the core purpose of the committee and really what is their exact role going to be? Is it going to be more so of an oversight or an advisory? Additionally, resources are going to be needed from several perspectives. And when I say additional resources, referring to additional committee members because this would be a completely separate committee. So council would have to define the types of committee members, what that would look like, the scope of what they would be reviewing, timelines, how often they would meet, et cetera. And then lastly, recruitment difficulties. We know that in some committees, even historically in the past with Measure T, there have been some challenges in recruiting or filling particular roles. The steps in this particular option would be to, again, draft operational guidelines, define the scopes, and recruit members to be on that committee. The third option would be to assign the oversight of the Measure R to an existing advisory body or even look at alternative models. The advantage is to this, you have existing resources already in place that could assist with this. Council, you do have a finance committee in place, which consists of the mayor and the vice mayor. They could be utilized in the process along with the budgeting process and working with city staff, the finance director, and coming to the council much in a similar way as during the budgeting process. The other advantage is you do have in this option is it could be essentially assigned to the city council. And when I say that the city council is the elected body who chose to put this particular item before the voters in November, the community has spoken. And every year, as we're preparing to do this particular year with our two-year budget cycle, staff will be working very hard to put that budget process together for you, which will include the funding not only for Measure T now, but for Measure R. And there's a lot of extensive workshops and processes that are in place to make sure that those conversations happen in front of the public, and then at the end of the day are ultimately decided upon by you. Some of the challenges in that particular scenario could possibly be the dilution of focus on what the voters intended Measure R funds to be used for. And then the steps in this particular item, as there's several alternative models available or direction that you could give staff, it would really depend upon council direction. So the council action and next steps this evening is to provide direction on oversight options, as I've shared with you. Staff is here, along with our finance director and city manager, to answer any questions. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So we're going to open it up for public comment. I'd like to invite the first member of the public to come up. Bring your boss, Alaski.
Hi, Mayor Chavez, Vice Mayor, city council members. I'm going to read from my phone like I always do. Okay, so I believe we need a separate oversight committee for Measure R because it's what the community wants and deserves. I think it will provide a critical layer of accountability, ensuring funds are managed responsibly and in alignment with community priorities. Separately, I believe it's equally important, no matter how this goes, that we remember how important it is to keep the community informed and educated. Something I heard through the whole thing with Measure R and kind of putting my neck out on the line for it was no one really understood where Measure T went, or where did it go here? Those people got raises, or just the amount of misinformation and small little tidbits that people ran, run with showed me that it's just important that we treat the community like they are smart and educated people who deserve to know where it's going. And I think we kind of shove it down their throats, everything, every dollar, every project, so they know, and they can be excited about it and in the know. And again, I just think it's important we have our own, there should be its own oversight committee. And I think that goes just with earning the trust of the community. And we didn't do that, or not we, but the community. With Measure T, I feel, and I think we can really regain the trust of the community through Measure R. And yeah, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Lali Salgado.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez, Vice Mayor Juarez, and council members. My name is Lali, and I am an organizer with CAUS, based here in my hometown, Santa Paula. And I'm here today to speak in support of creating a new independent oversight committee specifically for Measure R, separate from any existing advisory boards or steering committees. As you know, Measure R is a critical initiative for our community with funds aimed at improving roads through street repairs, maintenance, and infrastructure, as well as addressing other community needs. Given the magnitude of Measure R's impact, it is essential that it has a dedicated focus group that can advocate specifically for the community's best interest, track progress, and ensure transparency. While the existing boards and committees are valuable, they often already have broad mandates that would make it difficult to prioritize Measure R's goals or ensure that its specific funds are allocated properly and reflect the most pressing needs of the local community. A separate oversight committee for Measure R will ensure accountability through a dedicated body focused solely on overseeing Measure R while enhancing transparency by providing the community with clear, regular updates and a direct channel for feedback. This will also allow for specialized attention to Measure R's unique needs and priorities, avoiding the dilution of focus that can happen when mixed with other projects or issues. And most importantly, a separate oversight committee for Measure R will engage diverse voices from our community, ensuring that the perspectives of Santa Paula's residents, especially those from underrepresented groups, are front and center in decision-making. It is also crucial that the committee is district-based so that there is at least one person for each of our five districts. This will ensure fair and equitable representation of all neighborhoods in Santa Paula, making sure that every part of our city has a voice in how making sure that every part of our city has a voice in how Measure R funds are allocated and spent. By creating a new separate oversight committee, we are prioritizing community-driven decision-making and ensuring that Measure R serves the people of Santa Paula in the most efficient and effectively possible. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, we have Luis Gómez. And, well, Luis will be speaking in Spanish, so let's wait for the translator, which is here.
Hola, buenas noches. My name is Luis Gómez.
Good evening, my name is Luis Gómez.
Soy una orgullosa residente de Santa Paula y líder de CAUSA.
I am a proud resident of Santa Paula and a leader of CAUSA.
Somos un grupo de residentes de la comunidad que trabajamos juntos.
We are a group of residents that work together in the community.
Para hacer de nuestra comunidad un lugar mejor para todos.
To make our community a better place for everyone.
Por eso apoyamos la medida R.
And that is why we support Measure R.
Pasamos meses trabajando para que la gente votara por la medida R.
We worked many months so that people would vote for Measure R.
¿Por qué? Porque si usamos la medida R de manera correcta y estratégica podemos mejorar la calidad de vida de la mayoría de los residentes.
And why? Because if we use Measure R in the correct way and strategically, we can better the quality of life of the majority of residents of our community.
Si somos inteligentes y usamos el dinero de la medida R de una manera que refleje las necesidades de nuestra comunidad, será algo grandioso y algo del que podemos estar orgullosos.
If we are smart and we use the money for Measure R in a smart way, in a way that reflects the needs of our community, it would be amazing. And then we can all say that we are proud.
El trabajo apenas comienza.
The work has just begun.
El próximo paso es muy importante. Debemos elegir el tipo correcto de comité de supervisión para la medida.
The next step is very important. We must elect the right committee to supervise Measure R.
Debemos asegurarnos en tener un comité de supervisión separado que solo trabaje en la medida.
We need to be assured that we are going to have a separate committee that will be supervising Measure R.
Que incluya al menos un representante en cada distrito del consejo.
That includes at least one representative of each council.
Asegurarnos de que el comité tenga el poder de asesorar a la ciudad sobre el uso del dinero y revisar y auditar cómo se gasta ese dinero.
We need to be assured that the committee is going to back up the city on how the money is being used, and they will be revising and auditing on how the money is being used.
Dolores Huerta dijo una vez: "Cada momento es una oportunidad para organizarse."
Dolores Huerta once said, "Every moment is an opportunity to organize."
Que cada persona era una activista potencial.
That every person had a potential to be an activist.
Y que cada minuto era una oportunidad para cambiar el mundo.
And that every minute is an opportunity to change the world.
Aunque la medida R no cambiará el mundo, ciertamente cambiará a Santa Paula.
And even though Measure R will not change the world, it will change Santa Paula.
Dependerá de todos nosotros lograr el cambio que sea positivo.
It would depend on all of us to achieve that change that will be positive.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Luis. Graciano Magaña.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Graciano Magaña.
Good evening, my name is Graciano.
Soy residente de Santa Paula también.
I am also a resident of Santa Paula.
Soy miembro de CAUSA.
I am a member of CAUSA.
Un grupo que organiza la comunidad y trabaja en temas que interesan a la gente.
It's a group that organizes the community and we work on subjects that interest the community.
Y uno de los temas que más preocupa a nuestra comunidad.
And one of the subjects that most concerns your community.
Es la mejora de la calidad de nuestras calles.
It's the quality of our streets.
Es por eso que organizamos a cientos y cientos de personas para votar por la medida R.
And that is why we organize hundreds and hundreds of people to vote for Measure R.
Debido a la promesa de mejorar la calidad de nuestras calles.
Being given the promise that they would better the quality of our streets.
Estoy aquí para pedir tres cosas al ayuntamiento.
I am here to ask for three things to the council members.
Formar un comité de supervisión de la medida R.
To form a committee of supervision of Measure R.
Separado, compuesto por residentes.
Separate and made up of the residents.
Asegurar que el comité tenga al menos un representante de cada distrito del consejo.
And assure that the committee will have at least one representative of each district of the council.
Asegúrese de que el comité pueda asesorar al consejo municipal.
And assure that the committee will be able to advise the municipal council.
Con visión de futuro.
With a vision of the future.
Y que el comité tenga la capacidad de ser transparente.
And that the committee has the capacity to be transparent.
Con respecto a cómo se gasta el dinero.
Referring to how we're spending money.
Y garantizar que podamos revisar cómo se gastó ese dinero.
And guarantee that we can review how that money was spent.
Esta es la mejor manera de generar confianza con los residentes que no votaron por la medida R.
This is the best way to gain trust from those residents who chose to vote no on Measure R.
Y garantizar que mantengamos la confianza de quienes tuvieron la fe y el coraje para apoyar.
And guarantee that we keep the trust of those who have the strength and faith to...
Este aumento del impuesto sobre las ventas.
To support this tax on the sales.
La medida R será tan buena como la hagamos.
Measure R will be as good as we make it.
Así que asegurémonos de que el comité sea el adecuado para nuestra gran ciudad. Gracias.
So let's make sure that the committee is going to be adequate for our city. Thank you.
Gracias. Ricardo Soto.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Hola, miembros del ayuntamiento. Gracias por invitarnos esta noche. Mi nombre es Ricardo Soto, residente de Santa Paula y miembro del grupo comunitario CAUSA.
Hello to every council member here. Thank you for inviting us this evening. My name is Ricardo. I am a resident of Santa Paula and a member of the community group CAUSA.
Hicimos cientos de llamadas y tocamos más de mil puertas para asegurarnos de que la gente votara por la medida R.
We made hundreds of calls and we knocked on over a thousand doors to assure that people would vote for Measure R.
Estoy aquí para pedir al consejo municipal.
I am here to ask the council.
Cree un comité de supervisión para la medida R.
To create a committee of supervision for Measure R.
Aseguramos que el comité esté propuesto para los residentes de cada distrito del consejo.
And assure us that the committee will be built of those who are residents from each district of the council.
También debemos asegurarnos de que el comité se reúna regularmente.
And we must assure that the committee comes together regularly.
Y tenga el poder de aconsejar al consejo sobre dónde gastar el dinero.
And has the power to advise the council on where the money is being spent.
Qué calles merecen ser priorizadas.
Which streets need priority.
Y otros servicios públicos deberían recibir dinero.
And other public services should be the ones receiving the money.
La democracia es algo mucho, la democracia es algo que mucha gente olvida apreciar.
Democracy is something that a lot of people don't tend to appreciate.
Pero la democracia es la razón por la que tenemos, por la que tenemos la medida R.
But democracy is the reason why we have Measure R.
Por lo que tenemos el privilegio de esta noche estar aquí para que nuestras voces sean escuchadas.
And why we have the privilege of being here tonight so that our voices can be heard.
Nuestra ciudad siempre será mejor cuando más personas tengan la oportunidad de participar.
Our city would be better when more people have the opportunity to participate.
En el gobierno de manera significativa.
Can participate in the government in a significant way.
Por eso este comité no puede ser parte del, por este comité no puede ser parte de la medida T.
And that is why this committee cannot be part of Measure T.
Debe ser por sí solo, debe incluir a personas diferentes de las que han participado antes de los otros comités.
And it has to be built of those people who have, and include people that have not been included in other committees.
La gente quiere participar, solo necesita que le den una oportunidad.
People want to participate. They just need a chance.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
Gracias, Ricardo. Siga Amalia Ochoa. Amalia.
Buenas noches. Antes de todo, quiero recordarles a ustedes que estamos de luto.
Good evening. I want to remind everyone that we are mourning.
Porque este es mi hermoso país y está de luto. Porque la suida de Los Ángeles no logra todavía apagar su incendio.
We are in mourning for this country and because of the city of Los Angeles has not been able to contain the fires.
Han muerto muchas personas.
Many people have died.
Y duele el corazón.
And it hurts your heart.
Pero como dicen, esto tiene que continuar.
But as they say, this must continue.
Amalia está aquí como una líder comunitaria esta noche.
Amalia is here as a community leader this evening.
Muy buenas noches, miembros del consejo. A todos ustedes les digo buenas noches. Vicealcalde Juárez, buenas noches. Señor mayor Pedro Chávez, buenas noches.
Good evening to the members of this council. And I want to say good evening to Vice Mayor Carlos Juárez and you, Sir Mayor Pedro Chávez.
Como les acabo de decir ahorita, mi nombre es Amalia Ochoa, una líder comunitaria entregada para Santa Paula.
And as I just told you guys, my name is Amalia Ochoa, a community leader of Santa Paula that gives herself to the community.
Con CAUSA. Soy una líder comunitaria con CAUSA, de la cual me siento muy orgullosa.
I am a community leader with CAUSA, which I feel very proud of.
Hoy nosotros queremos un comité de supervisión nuevo y como dijo mi compañero, con la medida R.
Today we ask and we want a separate committee of supervision and as my colleague said, for Measure R.
Por eso, esta es de mi parte, por eso Amalia Ochoa, como una líder, hablé con mi comunidad de Santa Paula. Por teléfono.
This is me going off. I, Amalia Ochoa, spoke with my community over the phone.
Caminando por las calles, oyendo el dolor de mi comunidad.
Walking the streets and hearing the pain of my community.
Mi comunidad sufre mucho porque las calles quebradas, banquetas donde Amalia Ochoa se cayó, sufriendo grandes golpes que todavía no me puedo reponer.
My community is in pain and it suffers with broken streets, broken sidewalks, one which Amalia Ochoa fell and had wounds, those of whom I have not recovered from.
Pero como yo siempre digo, Amalia se cae pero se levanta porque lucha para su comunidad de Santa Paula, la que amo tanto.
And like I always say, Amalia may fall, but she also gets up because she likes to fight for her community in Santa Paula, who she loves very much.
Por eso convencimos, como dijo mi compañero, mis compañeros de CAUSA, convencimos y hablamos con la comunidad de Santa Paula para que se lograra pasar esta medida R. Esta medida fue por esfuerzos, por pláticas con la comunidad. No fue nada fácil para nosotros.
And as my colleague has said, we spoke to our community and we pushed the community and it was a lot of effort to make Measure R happen. It didn't just happen to happen, it became a law.
Ustedes no saben, lo respeto a todos ustedes porque Amalia respeta a todo el mundo. Amalia es amiga de todas las personas, pero yo soy una luchadora para que esta suida, esta bella suida, se componga y luzca y sea un orgullo para todas las personas que llegan a conocer Santa Paula.
And I respect all of you, but many of you don't know, Amalia is a fighter. She is a friend of everyone and we just want to fight for this beautiful city.
Como líderes comunitarios, queremos por nuestro, queremos eso, que tengamos un comité para la medida R.
And as community leaders, all we want is to have a separate committee for Measure R.
Porque nuestra comunidad votó para eso, queremos nosotros, como dijeron mis compañeros, estar seguro que todo eso que prometieron y prometimos, y lo dije yo, que iba a ser luchadora para mirar que mi comunidad tenga lo que se debe de tener. Compuesta las calles, compuesta las banquetas, porque ellos creyeron en nosotros. Ellos creyeron en una Amalia, ellos creyeron en un Graciano, ellos creyeron en un Ricardo, ellos creyeron en una señora Luz. Y nuestra organizadora Sitlali también, ella nos apoyó. Junto con Idea, la organizadora de CAUSA, platicamos con nuestra comunidad. Nuestra comunidad ya no quería votar, pero votó. Y yo sé por qué lo hizo, porque Amalia y CAUSA luchamos juntos para que votaran miles de personas.
Because they asked us for this. They asked us to assure them that this was going to happen. They want fixed streets, fixed sidewalks. And because people did not want to vote, but they voted because Amalia is a fighter. They voted because of my colleagues Ricardo, Luz.
Nosotros les aseguramos a ellos que cuidaríamos de esta medida R para asegurarles que todo se iba a cumplir lo que se prometió.
They did not want to vote anymore, but we promised them that we would make sure that all the promises that were made were going to come through.
Por eso necesitamos un comité aparte solamente de la medida R. La única esperanza que nosotros tenemos es en todos ustedes.
And that is why we're asking for a separate committee for Measure R. The only hope we have is in you guys.
Porque como lo dije, juntos podemos hacer la diferencia. De ver nuestra Santa Paula hermosa, bella, segura, para una comunidad que nos puede dar, que nos ha dado nuestros trabajadores del campo. para una comunidad que nos puede dar, que nos ha dado nuestros trabajadores del campo, nos ha puesto la comida.
Like I said, together we can build a beautiful Santa Paula, safe and thanks to our farm workers who also give us our food.
Ellos se merecen unas mejores banquetas, unos mejores callos, calles donde los niños caminen, no se caigan. Nuestros estudiantes no se caigan, ni las personas de tercera edad como yo no sufran más caídas. Yo ya no me quiero caer.
They deserve better sidewalks or safe sidewalks, safe streets, or children deserve safe streets or those of us who are elderly, I don't want to keep falling.
Por eso necesitamos tener nuestro comité con la medida R donde nosotros podamos asegurarle a la comunidad de Santa Paula que todo se está cumpliendo porque nosotros luchamos por la medida R. Muchas gracias por escucharme, estoy muy orgullosa de ser una líder para mi comunidad que tanto amo, Santa Paula. Gracias.
And that is why we need a separate committee for measure R so that we can complete what has been promised. I, I am a proud organizer of Santa Paula, a city that I love so much.
Thank you mija.
Gracias Amalia. Next up is Connie Teshla.
Si, entonces Connie Teshla. Good evening, welcome back, so exciting evening. I definitely agree with everything everybody said. I do feel that people want to know that they voted for this, streets were certainly at the top of the list and they want to see that happen. I have a little bit of concern in creating a committee because measure T sunsets. So that committee will then sunset unless it's voted in again. If you create a committee for measure R, when will it sunset? I, I don't know, maybe it can be for a certain stage because if you look at 20 years from now, hopefully the streets and everything else that we voted for will be put into place and you'll still have the committee. So that's my question is, how long will the committee last? So, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I do want to point out that the translator did an exceptional job this evening and that makes a difference communicating with folks that are monolingual. So thank you to the translator for being very effective in, in, in relaying that message. As we start the conversation, I'm going to open up for questions. First to staff, specific questions that you might have as council members on anything that was presented today before we go into specific discussion. Are there any questions for staff?
A quick one for staff, when you come up with the two options Mr. Roy asked, you have obviously the expanded overtime committee and then the second one is a separate. Do you know of any other cities that have this third option, assign oversight to an existing advisory body? I mean, how is that perceived or accepted by the community if you've done that much research?
I, I had not, it's actually just one of the additional options that council has. It's very, to be quite honest, very flexible options that the council has available to them in consideration of a committee. There's a lot of different avenues that we could take and I could actually certainly go back and pull up some additional examples from other cities. The ones that I did look at are from some of our neighboring communities and then they're very much in line with what you have before you already with measure T. They're just different in terms of their scopes and the number of the people and the way that they're selected that are on the committee. That third option is really to provide council, you know, alternative direction instead of just kind of sticking with what we currently have with measure T. Or creating a separate measure R committee.
Director of Finance, Kristi, you want to add anything?
Yes, so like the deputy city manager said, I don't have a lot of experience with this but I was able to look up a few. And it seems like the difference between an advisory and an oversight is, an oversight is strictly after the fact. Advisories for a lot of the ones that I looked up did tend to have both. So they would have both the recommendations on budget and still having the oversight, kind of what measure T has evolved to. But the distinction seemed to be that advisory in and of itself for the many examples that I found was both already.
Thank you for that Director. So there's a fundamental question based on the option. And the question would be, does the council feel that it would like an independent measure R committee?
I would actually pose the first question, and we can talk about your question if you want, but I would actually pose that the first question is what do we want the committee to do? Because I think that the, the format of the committee should then reflect what they're doing. Because depending on what they're doing, that, that might have an impact on what, on how the committee would be structured.
So the question before us, just to take a step back and dive into what you just mentioned and what, and going actually with Director Ramirez was the functionality, right? So oversight after the fact and then we providing review or of expenditures before the expenditure happens, right? Are we in agreement that we'd like both?
You mean that it would function just like measure T? Because I think that's honestly what I'm concerned about is how is that going to actually function? So let's say, let's just for wild, let's say both committees came back and said, we want 70% of the money to go to streets. Well now we suddenly don't have the money to spend on the other things that we also need to do as a city because now that, it's not like we're talking about 2 or 3 million dollars. We're now talking about 8 to 9 million dollars. And so if both of those committees came back and said, we basically want it to all to go to streets, well now we can't function as a city. And then we're in a position of we're going to have to say, well, we can't spend the money how you each recommended because you've got two different people who have said, this is how, these were our committee's priorities. Because there's a lot of overlap between measure R and measure T in terms of what we've said that we were going to spend them on. So how does that practically function? That's my question to all of it, for all of us to think about, is how would that work? It's one thing when there's one pot, it's a different thing when there's two pots.
So question for the city manager and for the director of finance, how do you package requests that go to measure T currently? How do you assess what recommendations or what you put forward?
I think the distinction is that the priorities were established with, with the measure T committee formation. And that isn't necessarily the case with measure R. Now, I think everyone would be in agreement that there is a top priority, which is our infrastructure, namely our streets and sidewalks. Is that a mandate then if you establish a measure R committee? That's your mandate? Is it a percentage? Is it a, we want you to focus on, you know, only infrastructure? Not public safety or not other services, you know, I think that's what Councilwoman Crosswhite is saying is, is a little more challenging with this than it was with the first committee. Because we, we need to sort that through, otherwise you're establishing a committee that staff doesn't know how to approach it and the committee doesn't know what its directions.
City manager, you know, you mentioned about a mandate, I mean, if you think about what measure T did and if you look at what the intent was, it was for police, fire, public safety, roads and youth. Now when we lost fire to contracting, the focus stayed with public safety and that was evident by the community and the council and the city supporting, keeping the police department. So there's an expectation by the public in measure T and I think we adhered to it. In fact, the advisory or the, the advice that the committees made, and I asked this of the city manager, if, if any city council before us had ever contradicted or went against the, the advice of the, of the measure T committee and to your recollection it hadn't. Maybe there was one during, before.
The caveat that I will make on that is that the way that it functions has morphed even though the, the way that the committee has been set up hasn't morphed. When the committee started, they put up percentages, they didn't put up budget recommendations and that was something that morphed and then once it happened, it came and it was like, well, we, that's never happened before but it was kind of like it was there. But they had, they would say, okay, we want, you know, 50% here, 20% here, 30% here. And then it would come to the council, in the budget setting process, when all of the public can come and speak, then the public would come down and the council would review the things that staff was bringing forward. And sometimes it would become 49% or it would become 52%, you know, and then the others would be adjusted accordingly. It was in the ballpark of the, of the recommendations of the committee, but it wasn't dollar for dollar because they weren't making dollar for dollar recommendations. So that's the caveat I would make on that, is that we weren't always able to stay exactly to the percentage depending on where the needs fell, right? Like maybe the, the police one would go down a percentage or two and the streets would go up a percentage or two, like it would just depend on what the projects were.
Was that variance mandated?
No, so there is no mandate, these are general sales tax, like we mentioned, these are three priorities and somehow percentages have been established. And if I may mention as well, it's not only once it gets to council that those changes were occurring. Within the measure T committee itself, they themselves have struggled with this self-imposed percentage distribution, right? There's been some years where they wanted to fund more for parks, but because that had already been attributed to PD and once, you know, PD, if you take away from PD, then you're going to have to take away from services and that wasn't the goal. So because they had that limited pot and those three specific categories, they were, they, they had their hands tell a bit that council does not have. Because you have the luxury of seeing the budget as a whole and being able to prioritize different things in different ways. But I did want to mention that because that is something that we've experienced the past two budget cycles where, you know, they have these set percentages for these three specific categories and they themselves have felt tied without the ability to see the entire budget as you do.
It's definitely a learning experience that took place with measure T, right? That's going to sunset in 10 years, it's going to be gone. This new funding stream is going to be ongoing and we use data through surveys to basically make a case to the community that we need a sales tax, right? So that data created those priorities. They were the top, they were top three, right? I think that we have to continue using data to make informed decisions about how we spend the money, right? So if we're on a two-year budget cycle, we need to survey the community every two years to determine where to pivot, right? Because you might have right now, 30, you need 30 million dollars to let's say to complete the whole city. We know we're only going to get a certain portion from our existing funding sources. Measure R is going to fast track the street repairs, right? I think the community wants or expects that we spend the money on the top priority that the residents want. And so knowing that measure T is going to go away and this is always going to be an ongoing, the priorities are going to change based on where the need is, right? But we're basing ourselves on data.
The good news is, and I promise I'll sit down after this and then it's back, the good news is that...
Can I finish my thought?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I was going to pivot to measure R now. And although it wasn't a mandate because the threshold is higher for, for passing, but it was certainly an expectation of the public who read the literature that was distributed of what it was going to be for. And you can clearly see that T and R have different priorities and I think it's incumbent for those people that are going to be on those committees to recognize what those expectations are. And that's some other comments but I'll wait for the council members.
Several thoughts here, going back to measure T and I remember when we voted for it, or it was voted for, that there was, there were a lot of people very nervous about general obligation, the general fund rather than specifics. And that's why the committee was formed to make sure that the spirit and the intent of the voters was respected. And I think the committee, measure T committee has tried very hard to do that and I think they've done a very good job about that. And I agree that the priorities are different for measure R currently because infrastructure is so important to our city and that's what's, what we're missing and that's what everybody knows is our greatest need. Because a lot of the needs of concern like public safety, a lot of it is already being taken care of by measure T. Now once measure T sunsets, that public safety may become a larger percent or priority later on down the line. So we need the ability to be flexible down the line and I believe that. But I, I do believe that even we in October, when the council directed staff to have a committee or create a committee, was it that sense that we just don't want to get that money and run amok with it. We want to make sure that we're respecting the desire of the public for infrastructure, streets, sidewalks and all of that as the major priority or need that we don't have funds for right now. And so I, I, we already were worried in October that we're just going to do this and we're going to have budgets and money goes everywhere and the intent of that great gift that the voters gave the city is taken care of for the, the needs that were in the ballot. If you look at the ballot measure, you need to read that, that's what they voted for, not the survey. But we need to read the ballot statement and what we voted for, but it was potholes and it was infrastructure, public safety and it also included general services. It was kind of an overall general, general needs of our city but with the priority being the infrastructure, pothole, streets and sidewalks and all of that. So I'm, I'm in favor myself of creating a committee. I do believe that measure T, when you have that debate about the advisory versus, what's the other one?
Oversight.
Oversight. Oversight is after the fact, it's too late to fix it. So that's why I do believe that it needs to be advisory and I think it's a good idea to have that, to have that public input. We're not bound by it, we've tried to stay close to it because measure T committee has tried to stay close to the intent. And so it's not difficult for the council to go ahead and approve what their recommendation is because they've tried to stay true to the intent of the voters for that money. And so, so I, I just think it's too late if you do an audit and you realize that the money wasn't spent the way it was intended for, it's too late to fix it at that point. So I do think advisory in advance is very helpful. So I, if we were to form a committee, I would want it to be advisory with always transparency, public involvement for input. But we've certainly through this debate in our city have had a huge debate about our needs and I believe we all agree on the needs. Those who voted against may have just felt it was too much or too much of a burden on businesses or that sort of thing. But for whatever reason, I don't think we disagree on the fact that we need our infrastructure and our streets to be improved in the city and that we have those. If that's what the intent is for the funds, but we shouldn't tie ourselves to percentages because every year there may be a big project or a small project as it rolls through that will make it very difficult if we tie ourselves to percentages. But I do think we should tie ourselves to the, the spirit and the intent of what the voters wanted to do with the funds.
Just for clarification, I don't think we're talking about percentages, right? No one's in agreement with percentages.
Only since it's been brought up, I want to mention that I don't think we should.
Yeah, no. That pigeonholes you.
Right.
There's a slide that goes, that one. So let's compare, let's compare this, right? So measure T. I want to know, the council later on, when they passed Measure T, they created both the advisory and, correct?
For...
And the oversight.
For Measure T, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there was a provision, the Oversight Committee would review and audit expenditures of revenues. What essentially happened is, leading up to the election, council continued to have conversations on what the committee would look like. And there was conversation at the end as to exactly what you're having right now. Should it be, should the committee review expenditures and provide council direction on or recommendations on expenditures beforehand? Or should it be done after the fact? And really, when it ended up coming to council at the end of the day, the term Oversight Committee was used throughout the formation of it. When it, in fact, was reality by the time council approved it, it was actually, it became an advisory committee. Because it was stipulated in the resolution that the committee would specifically provide recommendations on expenditures of Measure T funding.
Except that it was supposed to be more general than what it is now. It wasn't intended that they were making a recommendation dollar-for-dollar. Originally, the intent was that they would make a recommendation. That's where the percentages came up, was that... Because it doesn't, in the actual actions of the committee, it doesn't say anything about advisory. But there's a nebulous paragraph in the beginning, which is what has now become advisory. But that wasn't the original intention. It was that there would be some general guidelines, but not specific. And so I think we all agree that we need to... Which is also what the public wants. We need to accelerate our street program. We need to make sure that we're fixing our sidewalks. Like, those basic infrastructure things, we've got to complete that. There's no disagreement on that, right? We're all, we've talked about it many, many, many times, just as recently as a couple of months before, you know, December, where we had the presentation on how much extra money it would take in order to be able to accelerate the street program, right? I mean, that's, we all agree on that. We've got to prioritize our streets. We've got to prioritize our sidewalks. You know, there's some other capital improvement things related to that that we've got to do so that we don't have sinkholes and, you know, all of that stuff, right? There's very specific things that we all know need to happen. The question that I have is practically, if you've got one room of people over here on one night, and one room of people over here on a different night making recommendations, streets overlap between the two. You know, 911 response overlaps between the two. So how does that practically function? And so that's where, like, ultimately, we're the ones that are responsible to the voters for the expenditure. And if you have 10 unelected people who are making that decision, how does that work?
But they don't have the authority to make the decision. They're making recommendations.
But that's what we're saying, because that's the expectation. If we set these both up as advisory committees, the expectation is, because we've heard it over the last several months...
So are you saying that we should amend Measure T to be advisory?
Well, that's what it's doing now. I'm just saying that because that's how it's functioning, if we set up Measure R to be the exact same thing, now we've got a problem. If both committees put forth a recommendation, we might actually be in the position of not being able to exactly go dollar-for-dollar by each recommendation, which is not what we've been doing. Because each committee doesn't know what the other one's doing.
But the staff does, and that's where the competency of the staff is.
Okay, so then you're saying staff is going to decide $9 million of our budget without us? But that's what I'm saying.
It wouldn't be a staff decision. It'd be, hey, we have public works that needs X amount of money to do the next five years of the five-year payment improvement. We need $300,000 from here, and we need another pot of money here. The staff comes up with the creativity of how you present that to the committees. But at the end of the day, the committees are always going to be advisory, because we, at the end of the day, are accountable to make those decisions.
But no, they, but again, are they advisory or are they oversight?
What is Measure T?
It's supposed to be oversight.
By its guidelines, it gets a little confusing, because what's written into the preamble of the guidelines is Recommendation on Expenditures. But in fact, the guidelines don't call that out. It calls out four duties of the Measure T Committee. Four distinct duties, under duties of the committee, to report annually by May 1st on the recommended expenditures of the one-cent sales tax.
Okay.
To review receipts and expenditures...
Can you read that one more time, that first one?
To report annually by May 1st on the recommended expenditures of the Santa Paula one-cent sales tax.
So they're making recommendations for expenditures?
No, they're reporting on how the money was spent.
Reporting annually on expenditures.
Can we get clarification from the director, please? On that language in particular?
From what I understand, if it's reporting on recommended expenditures, they're recommending the budget for the next year.
Exactly.
That's where it gets confusing.
But that's not what it was, that wasn't the intention.
How long has Measure T been around?
That's how it's getting interpreted now, but that was not the intention. So that's why I feel like we need to be really clear now in what we're actually setting up. Like, we need to make sure the language is much more clear than what we did with Measure T.
Yeah.
If I might just add, one thing that I didn't mention out, but just to put things into perspective as we're thinking about committees, is that the funding between both Measure R and Measure T, at the end of the day, once put together, almost going to reflect 1/3 of your entire budget. So just something to keep in perspective in terms of precedent-setting for, as you move forward. Just something to consider.
Before you do that, Corinne.
I was just going to mention that I do recall once the meeting where we got the recommendations. And I asked, well, can't we just spend a little more of this money here instead? And I was told, well, we're just really going to go with the recommendation. Staff recommends that we go by the recommendation by Measure T. So it was a pretty strong, it's a pretty strong recommendation that's coming out of that committee to us. It's a big deal to try and change what they're recommending. So they, in its current state and how it's operating, they have quite a bit of influence, whether it's come from staff to them to us or from them, they have quite a bit of power in how those funds are spent.
City Attorney, is it something related to what the council member just mentioned?
Yes, I just wanted to hopefully orient the council a little bit. It seems to be there is some disagreement over what the Measure T Committee is meant to be in its formation document, which is part of your packet, in that it's in the form of a resolution. And that tells you, I think, what some people, some members here are saying is that the details in that resolution are ambiguous. And then what I'm hearing from staff is that in practice, and also from our council members in practice, the Measure T Committee has evolved into something else and has become something that is not in writing, but just as custom has dictated going forward. So, you know, your decision tonight will be to consider how are you going to structure this prospective Measure R Oversight Committee? So are you going to have a Measure T Committee that's both advisory and an oversight auditing function?
And we measure R, not T?
Well, yeah. Is it going to have, like, the same kind of functionality as Measure T currently does? And making that very explicit in your information documents? Or there's also the risk of it evolving into something more organically that I think Measure T has become?
So it would appear that the evolving of this resolution is just by past practice or by operating practices. If this council were to form two committees, and the guidelines for, say, the R are going to be more of an auditing, what do you have to do? I guess you just change the resolution if you wanted to make the other one congruent with it, right? Measure T? So they're both operating under the same operating principles and guidelines?
Yes, you know, council has a ton of flexibility in how they want to structure their committees. As a matter of practicality, I don't know how helpful it'd be to alter the Measure T resolution and its guidelines.
Thank you. I call into question, why wasn't this not fixed prior? And now we're trying to, oh, well, we didn't do it right last time, so now we have to fix it now this time.
One of the points is, and one of the options is, that we combine the two into one. So...
It's going to go away.
Right, well, one could continue on. But you just have to understand how that one functions if we're going to combine the duties as well. So that's why this discussion is worthy, so.
So basically, they've, Measure T has basically gone beyond the scope of their work. Correct?
And if I could just...
And we never corrected that?
If I could just add historically a little why that came about? When the pandemic hit and we went into an emergency dip in sales tax, we had to make some immediate adjustments. After that, starting towards the end of 2019 into 2020, our sales tax projections have been exceeded consistently every year. We've ended with the surplus until this last year. So for three or four cycles in a row, we had additional funds. And staff felt that it would be appropriate to engage the Measure T, because they were Measure T funds. We felt it was appropriate to engage the committee outside of the budget cycle to help make recommendations to council on these surplus of funds. And that's where I think maybe we got a little astray of what the core intent of the committee was, because we were relying on them to give recommendations to the council. Because otherwise, you probably would have kicked it back, saying, well, wait, these are Measure T funds. Shouldn't we hear from the Measure T Committee? And so in anticipation of that, we did that. And I think, to your point, in some ways, we haven't stayed entirely true to this criteria. For better or worse, that's where we find ourselves. But that's not really our purpose tonight. If the council wants us to fix this or change it, we can. Tonight's focus, of course, is on Measure R.
I'll be honest, until Councilmember Crosswhite brought it up, I had not thought about the complication of two, not necessarily competing, but two entities making recommendations for the same departments, essentially. And that's a really complicated thing to do. And it creates, how do you communicate with each other? How do you divide this into this pot and this into that pot? And then going forward on funding, how, sources of funding for certain projects. A little bit from here, a little bit from there. It's messy, and I don't know quite how to get out from under that.
Well, we do it all the time. Right? Aren't you creative? You find creative ways, package, funding sources?
But the complication of having two separate committees and two separate administrations and all of that, yeah. Well, in 12 years. Well, that's right, we're in 25, sorry. 11 years.
I have to disagree respectfully with Roy S.'s comment or reaction on the slide about delusion of focus. That was one of the negatives you had about maintaining a five-member committee for Measure R. And I can tell you, in this community, there's a lot of people that supported it and have expectations. And not only that, but there were some pretty good challenges made by the opponents of Measure R. I wouldn't be surprised if those people want to be on this committee. And we'll talk about transparency and inclusion if those people actually stepped up and were on it and saw how things work and how it's going to benefit the city.
Well, I'm wondering if there's a little bit of a hybrid. Like, you would have to be very clear in how you worded it, but where you could have a committee, rather than functioning like Measure T, where they're directly, sort of, at this point, dollar-for-dollar, saying where it goes. If, and we'd have to play with the budget process, because I'm thinking this through as I'm saying it out loud. But where we would have, because we have all those budget hearings, and we have all those budget workshops, if you would sort of start to get an idea of what was going to need to go into what pot, right? So like, council, for example, could say, we have a policy. We want to do our, finish the rest of our streets in X number of years. Staff, what's that going to cost? Then we, you know, staff does their magic. Okay, how much will we need from each pot? And then, how the committee could function is the... Because staff will have to have a record of all the money that's in that pot. Then as part of the budget process, they have a meeting. They look at the recommendations for how it's going to be spent. So then before it's spent, they can see if it's sort of like a pre-audit. And then there would be a post-audit. But at least you'd be looking at the budget holistically. They would have a part in the budget process to see. They would have been able to watch our budget meeting, participate in our budget meeting, like every other member of the public, and see how all the pieces fit together, but then also see what specifically in Measure T, or I mean Measure R, sorry. Like, I'm just wondering if there's something like that that could help with some of this, you know, that could respect the public's desire to have a committee, that it wouldn't be completely after the fact, but that it wouldn't be exactly how Measure T is functioning at this point either. Because I think that that could get very, very messy. But it would still give them, there would still be a point in the budget process where they could say, mm, I don't know if this is quite in line with our understanding. And it wouldn't be completely finalized. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm trying to think this through. You know, how you maintain the transparency, how you maintain the audit function, how you maintain... But also not get into a position where you've got to... Either staff is completely in control, and there's, council doesn't get to set priorities on over 1/3 of our budget, almost 40% of our budget. Or, like, I'm just trying to think creatively through it with us all as we're thinking through how this would function, to respect what the community desires and their desire to be involved in the process, and also make it so that it doesn't become a logistical nightmare, and we end up in a position where it's just a mess every single time we have to put together a budget. So anyway, just...
This is, we're having infusion of cash that's coming. We're in the two-year strategic planning process this year. So the committee itself... We want a committee, yes, or no?
I'm saying, let's figure out what we want them to do, and then we could figure out what the structure would look like.
Well, we're going to be able to do strategic planning process, know that we have a certain amount of money to spend. Staff's going to make recommendations, hey, we're going to spend $10 million on streets, and we're going to advance another five years on this payment plan. And then it's going to go to this committee, so that they're involved as well to understand where the funds are going. And then, before the money's spent, it comes to council, and then we make, we approve it. And there you go, right? The process is still the same.
It sounds more like oversight, though, as opposed to advisory. More of a, kind of a plan check committee, as opposed to separately deciding what each, what percentage should be spent.
Percentages, not going percent.
Or how much of a focus we're going to have on different departments for the funds. But that's, you know, again, want to have public input. And the intent, I think, was that the public just wants to be able to trust... that the money that they're giving the city by voting for it goes to what they want it to be spent on. Does it take a whole nother committee, maybe? For their comfort level, that there's... It's being run through public as opposed to just trusting your council members that they elected? That's an interesting discussion, as far as how you're creating an extra layer.
I don't understand everything about the budget, but I think that measure R was voted on by the public and they voted yes. So I think it deserves its own committee. How exactly it works and making sure that it's not overlapping to where we're not going to be as effective as we could be with the money coming in. That needs to be obviously talked about and figured out. But I think that it deserves a committee. It deserves a chance, just like measure T, to allow public... The public to have input on where the money is going. And the transparency is super important. Because like someone mentioned earlier, measure T money? I've heard so many things about where that money went or didn't go. So measure R is an opportunity for us as a council and for the community to be able to see in a clearer way and understand where the money is going and maybe turn some of the people that voted against it into people that understand and can... Can see fully whatever the idea was behind this new measure. I just think that we owe it to the people that live in this community to at least give it an opportunity to stand on its own. And us, as a council, and staff, figure out how to make sure that they... There isn't so much of that. Not that it's not going to happen, but when it happens, how do we address it?
Thank you for sharing that. Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Crossway, I respect your comments tonight and the problems and conflicts that you see with having two committees. And I thought about this long and hard and I've heard all the arguments tonight. And I'm still inclined to support establishing a separate oversight with a focus on oversight, primarily. And working through all the details, I think that can be done, especially what we're doing through the budget process this year and refining what may have gone right or wrong with the measure T committee. Maybe that needs some refining, but I'm inclined to support a second oversight committee for R.
Is that in form of a motion? Not there yet.
Are you just looking for direction or a motion today?
Well, Council... Councilmember Crossway brought up an interesting idea of a hybrid. So just kind of curious to see what the thought is on that, if there's a consensus possibly on that. And I think Council or Vice Mayor Juarez, that sounds like it aligns in some ways with what you're suggesting as well, as well as Councilmember or an alias. So if you wouldn't mind clarifying, staff would, you know, could go back and work on something if that hybrid model sounds like something...
A hybrid meaning that both measures come together or that they work the same?
It would be, as I believe Councilmember suggested, it would actually be a separate committee dedicated to measure R. And the way it would work, I would obviously defer to our finance director to kind of put, you know, some of the language together for the policy. But essentially, it would act as an oversight committee. And I think that second bullet point right there ensures expenditures align with voter-approved intention and objectives would stay true to the oversight portion. Essentially, we would just build out the process of how that committee would work, similar to possibly the way that Councilmember Crossway laid it out. I would work with the finance director and would see at what point in the budgeting process that would seem to fit in best. And then bring that... Bring those recommendations to a committee. So they're essentially doing and ensuring of the expenditures that, you know, the staff is proposing for the next budget is in alignment with the voter-approved intentions. And then that would go to the council.
So the idea of the oversight, right? We're all kind of leaning on oversight? Kind of meets the priorities of the community, right? I will... I will add this, as someone who's coming new into this process, okay? Come from bigger cities, we deal with things a little bit differently. We have to make this oversight, when we say a hybrid, better than what we did on measure T, because we did not do a good job in the community to really let the community know how those funds were used. The city staff scrambled at the last minute to provide us public education tools, where we should... Those should have been in line at the beginning, clear expectations. Annually, we're going to list them. If they're on the website, they're accessible. People don't have to dig around and find out where the expenditure went. Regarding the audit, when you look at the audit, the audit doesn't tell you where the expenditures are. And one of the recommendations that was made is that if we're going to have an audit, we should have an addendum that includes where the expenditures actually went to reinforce and build upon that public trust that I think we've lost of folks.
If I could just kind of interject on that, though, I think that's a communication problem, not a functioning of how the monies are spent. I just think that's just something that we need to be better at so people understand where the funds have gone. So it's a misunderstanding due to the lack of communication.
And that's the 2.0, making it better, the oversight, including the communication.
Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Right, to enhance it. So it's more of an enhancement, yeah.
I mean, because it... The absolute truth is that all of the money from measure T has been spent on public safety, streets, and youth-related activities, period.
Yes.
It has not been spent on anything else. And so, yes, we could also do better on continuing... Like, there needs to be a bow. Because I think part of what happened was so much energy has gone into the committee deliberation and recommendations on things, that then less energy went into the oversight piece, because they're like, well, we already made the decisions. So what we don't... They kind of... I think it's kind of gotten lost that they were also then supposed to audit them and not just talk about them, because they were so involved in deciding them, right? And so really making sure that the oversight piece is stronger here and that we're reviving the communication around how measure T. Like, I know we've started to do it through the measure R process, but really being clear around that, that this is how they were spent. Yes, it's still in alignment. These are the projects for measure T. These are the projects for measure R. And it gets a little messy, because some projects are going to be in both.
That's fine.
Because that's just, right? But making sure that, you know, like, maybe there's some that it's like, okay, we did X number, you know, miles of street projects. That came from measure T and measure R in these amounts, right? And that maybe some of that ends up being a joint final document so that it makes the picture more clear. But that it really is more of that, like, really leaning in on the oversight and the communication. And with this hybrid, we could have a place in the budget process where they see before the final budget is adopted, how it aligns with the voter-intended priorities.
Just to be clear, the hybrid you're talking about, Councilmember Crossway, is a separate committee from... Okay, then I would totally support that. Thank you.
Yeah, it just meant a hybrid process. Because the... A traditional audit would just be at the end of the two-year budget or the end of a one-year budget, you would have an audit function and that would be it. And so what I'm recommending is that in order to sort of satisfy both things, that there would be a budget participation. And we can continue to let staff kind of flesh out what that would look like in a way that doesn't get too messy, but that they do have a role in seeing specifically a presentation where they can ask questions and understand how the measure R portion of the budget relates to the larger budget before we adopt the final budget. So yes, it makes our budget process a little bit... It has one extra step, but it's one extra step.
This is for the city manager. So just so that we don't lose the public's faith in this, we keep hearing about that the Oversight Committee of Measure T morphed from oversight to advisory. And I just want to be clear that things worked and they worked well and there was transparency and there was accountability. So it may not have followed the guidelines, but it worked the way it was intended. Is that correct?
It's absolutely correct. And I think the flaw, if you want to call it a flaw, is the committee was so effective that we relied on them more. So I think it worked well. There was a cross-representation of local businesses, of community civic groups, of our senior and youth populations. And they really were thoughtful about difficult decisions, about what priorities were. They pushed back on staff recommendations that didn't, in their minds, align with the priorities that they felt were of the utmost importance. And we have things to show for it. The fact that Main Street got paved when it did was because of the committee and their recommendation. So, yeah, it worked very well. And maybe we became too dependent on them, lost sight of it.
Again, just to clarify that, you know, it worked. Thank you.
So the other layer of this would be composition of a committee?
Correct. Selection of your members and...
Councilmember?
As I was reading through all of this and realizing and thinking about how it's a lengthy process and it's a frustrating process, and sometimes we don't have people for committees or have the ability to fill committees, it occurred to me that, why couldn't we have each council member appoint someone to the committee? And just make it simple? You know, there's wide representation from the community that way, wide representation of the council. And I thought that would be a... Would streamline the process of the appointments. And then, the term could be for the length of the term of the council member. So then you have staggered memberships that way as well. So it's a thought for discussion.
Just to piggyback that, as we're moving into district-based representation. You know, we just have two council members selected from districts. So in this case, because you have a four-year term, you would select somebody to sit on the committee for a four-year term. Whereas, three of us that have two years left would pick someone to serve two years. So we stagger it. So I'm in complete support of moving into that model, because it does guarantee that we have the full gambit of representation across all of the city.
I'm not sure in the thought of that if we'd have to appoint someone from our own district, only because that suddenly sometimes limits who you may think someone is the perfect person as far as judgment or expertise or whatever. And so I don't know if I would take it so far as to mandate that it be by district. But would just really give the council members the freedom to pick the person that they felt was within the whole city. Because the cities and the streets go everywhere and are all affected by it. But each one could make that on... Their own decision for that, so...
The stumbling block to that is because of districting, Councilmember Crossway and I are in the same district now. So there's going to be one unrepresented...
Temporarily then, then. Why, you wouldn't want to do it by district to begin with, you couldn't then.
Right now, we're considered at-large elected councilmen. So we can select anybody from the city. What we don't want is to create a system that's inequitable. And so imagine you select people that all live in the same neighborhood, which I guess, again, goes back to the reason why districting was created, so...
Can we think about that piece? Because we're going to have to revisit some stuff that staff brings back. Because I'm just trying to think through, like... Because we've had to do this sometimes when we've needed to suggest people for, you know, committees, like when there were interviews and different things. And so the only concern I have is if we're each coming with a person, how we do make sure that we don't all bring someone who identifies as the same, you know, gender or we don't, right? Like, so we don't all end up with, like, a committee that actually isn't as diverse and representative as we would want it to be if we're just going, okay, well, I'm in the dark going to bring forward my name. So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out how we... Because that's one thing, at least when you go through and do interviews.
But we could at least maybe put up our candidate for approval by the council. That way you've got an extra, like, hey, what's going on here? This doesn't feel right.
Or have a discussion about who we're thinking about bringing or putting forward for it. And then talking out any concerns we have about it not being...
Representative.
Whatever it is we want to call it, you know?
Expertise.
But having a conversation, that way we're not in the dark. It allows us to share whatever our concerns may be, one way or another. But it gives us an opportunity.
It's a... It's a model that other cities use that are districted, where each councilperson makes a recommending appointment, but it's still up to the ratification of the entire council.
That makes sense.
There's still checks and ballots.
A few years ago, I applied for the grand jury and it was a whole gambit of interviews with judges and tours and sitting in on meetings. And at the end of the day, they brought everybody in the room that had submitted applications and they put their name in a hat. And they pulled them in. That's how they picked the grand jury. I mean, that's something to consider if each of us brought five people and you pull the names out of the hat. As long as they're qualified.
Mayor, because I think the only thing that I'm trying to think through, and this is why I just... I don't want to necessarily know that I'm going to be personally ready to decide tonight, is that the thing that... Because I'm always like, okay, what are the pitfalls? The only thing that I'm concerned about is if our concern is with transparency. If that is our ultimate concern, I just want to make sure that the process is such that it will come across to the public as being truly transparent, right? At least when we do interviews for other committees, people could come down and listen. There's a, you know, there's a whole, like, people who, in order to be on the committee, everybody has to answer questions. There's a process. And so I'm just... The only thing, because this is an oversight and transparency committee, I would not want to create a structure where the public felt like, oh, well, they're just appointing their best buddy or their whoever, and then they're going to just do what that person wants and not truly be a transparent auditing entity. So that's the only reason why I want a little bit more time to think through exactly what that looks like and what that process is to make sure that we're... We're... That we're creating something that it will be perceived by the public as being truly transparent.
So we have some information from us, direction regarding composition. You've heard enough on that issue, right? Come up with some models?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Cross, I was just considering, what if the process was in similar fashion in terms of the interview? And you don't have to agree with this right now, but I'm just thinking, hearing you out. Interview process, similar to what you have right now, but the council member is bringing that person forward to interview with the entire council. And then, as the city manager suggested, at the end of that interview process and public view, there would either be a ratification to approve that particular person or not. And that would be in full public display.
The one thing I would add as well is this is a funding, right? I think it's important that we don't have the same people serve on the same committees. So if you're already on a funding committee on some other committee that relies on funding measure T, we shouldn't be picking people to double duty, especially when it comes to funding, because that's where, I think, going back to your point, we're picking people... Why?
Too much power?
I just wanted to add to that. It would give an opportunity for people who haven't served on a committee to become a part of it and learn the process and be a part of that decision-making and allow us to continue to push forward with the transparency for whatever the process is that we're working on.
Could I ask for just one other piece of input, then? Our committees always have some minimum criteria, namely that they're residents of the city and that they're 18 years of age unless they're a youth representative. In the case of this primarily being about oversight, we're dealing with a lot of numbers and complex issues. Do you want there to be some language, even if it's not a criteria, but just a suggestion that selected members should have some experience in the areas of, you know, budgeting, accounting? that selected members should have some experience in the areas of, you know, budgeting, accounting, business?
Do we have that criteria for any other committee? Do you have it for Measure T?
In Measure T's case, you don't, according to that kind of experience, what you do have is representation of a particular part of the community, like youth or civic. So I'm just asking, as we draft something, if that is deemed to be of value or importance. Not as a, okay, you can't be on it if you don't know how to balance a budget, or something, but just rather, like, as a suggestion of a standard.
These are taxpayer monies.
It's a hard thing to decide, because you would want some expertise on the ability to understand it, but you also, every single person is a taxpayer, and they want to know how their money's being spent. So, it's, you know, you could use it as a guideline to have a certain amount of understanding of budgeting, but I'd hate to make it mandatory if you've got a taxpayer who just wants to know if their streets are getting paid, so...
And if we're selecting, then we're obviously going to look for individuals who are going to have, or a desire to get into this kind of work, and you're going to close the number of people that have that experience. I think it's a learning experience also for people that do it for the first time, that have a desire to wish to learn.
We have some in our job applications, you know, skills desirable, desirable but not required for the position. I mean, that's something to consider.
You do have that with your housing trust fund group, too.
The one thing I think I'm still struggling with is if it's coming, and it's an appointment, it's likely coming as someone that the elected officials already know. And so I guess that's what I'm, like, when we've done other committees, we've found really great people who wanted to serve, that we didn't necessarily all know before they came. And so I guess that's just what I'm, like, how do we make sure that we're really getting a good mix of people? So I guess I just, I just, this is a piece that I want us to, you know, continue to talk to people between now and when this comes back, so that we can make sure that we constitute this in a way that really does demonstrate transparency to the community.
Is it considered an appointment if we're still, like, Mr. Roya said? Going to have an interview, and bring them in front of council, and go through the whole process? That's where I think the transparency piece you're mentioning comes in. It is somebody that we would choose, but we'd have time to speak to people we know, or that we think of would be good for this, maybe, or whatever, but we'd still have them go through the process of filling out the paperwork, answering the questions, and then having the interview. That would allow the public to see that play out, so that they could understand, or maybe see where each of us thought that that person would be good for the task that we're asking them to take on.
Councilmember Crosswhite, if I might add, so I hear you out, and I'm actually taking this all in, taking a lot of copious notes. What if you had a representative from each district, or for each councilperson, similar to the way I mentioned before, but you actually make it a seven-person committee, so two members actually could be at-large, and maybe you accept applications from the general city as a whole? That would give people the ability to possibly apply for those two member-at-large positions, yet you still each also get a representative, so it essentially gives those people who you think might not be able to be selected, just as an option.
Let's play this out for a second. Not everyone's a district. I think that would work if everyone's a district. But right now, we have three at-large members. So our flexibility is that we should select someone from anywhere in the city, because we represent at-large.
When those terms end, at this current time, right now, the, you know, it could be that those picks for those that are not in districts would end at the same term as that councilperson, and then when it switches over to, and then when it switches over to district, it would just be two members at large.
And we can get to that in a few years' time.
But this conversation is helpful, and us trying to put together... Five.
For consistency's sake, why not keep the same appearance of, right? Okay, so we have sufficient information for staff? Do we need to bring back?
Do you want direction, motion?
That's plenty of direction, so...
Yeah, we'll take a stab at this, and work with the city attorney on some clearer criteria, and...
I just want to say, even tonight with the discussion, my mind has gone a couple of different ways, and have changed my mind a bit with points that have been brought up. So a lot has been brought up. We just want to do the right thing, and I would just like to assure, I just, I know this council, and I know that we just want to make sure that the public will know that the intent is that the monies will be spent the way they intended when they voted for Measure R, but we just want to make sure that we're setting in motion something long-term that will make sure that the public are looked at, their funds are looked after, so... So I'm just, I'm kind of a little bit all over the place tonight, too, with different ideas presented, so, but I look forward to how you put it all together for us.
Thank you for that, council member. All right, so staff has enough directions, going to come back at a future date. Thanks for everybody's advocacy on the issue. We're going to move on to item 10B, and just to ensure that there's no perceived conflict of interest, because I am a property owner in Harvest, I am going to pass the gavel to the vice mayor, and I will step out of the room.
The city attorney needs a break.
Oh, okay. Take a quick, one-minute break. Okay, take a five-minute break.
Up to five. Five, I just need two. I said I lost.
What? Oh, I know.
Horribly lost.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Wait till you go. Wait, wait. You should take an assignment up there one time.
Well, they haven't given me a, why don't you start it with homework? I went to children's hospitals, like, um, yeah, it's...
Have you tried, um, have you taken the CCHI job?
No. I'm scared.
You should. It's scary, but you should.
I've done it.
Children's hospital's looking for a full-time interpreter, and they start at ninety.
Ninety?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, they've already told me in chalk, they told me at UCLA.
You should do it. You should definitely do it. It's really scary, but...
Have you tried it?
I already took it.
Okay.
And I, I always tell people, like, it is just my third one, actually. If I pass it, you can pass it.
I have so many exams to take right now. I had to take my teaching exam, a permit to teach.
Yeah.
And I had to take that, I had to take three exams for that, and I'm just drained already.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Putting another exam on my plate right now. I think, actually, that would be easier, the CCHI, rather than the teaching exam.
It's pretty, it's not as intimidating as they say it is. Like, it really is. Like, some words, yeah, like, um, the key is just, like, practice with, like, no. My mentor told me, you don't, you don't study, you practice with other people who are trying to take them. Like, you just practice, practice, practice. Or you make a public post on, like, the interpreting pages, like, hey, I want to take this exam, someone who already took the exam, can I, you have one day a week for, like, thirty, you have thirty minutes a week to help me. I mean, people will help you. Like, that's how I did it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like, that's how I did it. And I'm like, hey, and you want to take it, will someone help me? But I didn't, I didn't want to teach.
I don't want to do it either anymore, because I already work at the high school. And after working at the high school, being at the elementary, I said, yeah, we're not going to do this. I'm going to fin, I finished a program, I'll take the exam, because now it's a requirement.
Yeah.
But it's not the route I'm going to take.
Yeah, but I remember when I finished grad school, I was, like, so excited. I was twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, like, I just got my masters, like, all right, let's go into teaching.
Mm-hmm.
I'm like, I know, nobody else, I'm like, I'll be too.
No.
And I've been with, I, I go around like once in a while, just to, like, get me out of the house.
Mm-hmm.
But with baby coming, I'm just going to, like...
Being, taking calls?
I'm going to take six months off.
When are you due, soon?
I'm technically due March thirteenth, but due to measuring ahead, due to this, so...
Okay, we're going to call the recess over, we're back to action item 10B, which is Santa Paula Creek design. Just before the break, Mayor Chavez recused himself from this discussion, so this regards Santa Paula Creek Division Design.
Thank you. All right. We're back from our break, Councilmember Chavez recused himself from item 10B, Santa Paula Creek Bridge Design, and so I think we have staff going to make a presentation there, city manager?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Let me pass the mic over to our city attorney, and then she'll also be introducing our presenter.
And real quick, Madam Clerk, we don't have any public comment, do we?
No, we do not, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Item 10B is a discussion of the Santa Paula Creek Bridge Design. Just a reminder that this item is limited to the aesthetic design of the bridge. Other details about the bridge is not before the council tonight, such as the timing of the bridge construction, and other details. So the purpose tonight is to speak to our master developer, who's responsible for constructing the bridge here tonight. We have David Luletta from Luis Limanera, and his co-presenter, who has prepared some of the plans here. One of the other issues I want to point out is that they ultimately will be deciding how the bridge is designed, as long as they conform to the specific plan and other provisions in the development agreement, which, as far as I can tell, they have, so council can go ahead and consider the plans that are here up on the screen tonight, and provide their feedback on the different elements. And I will turn this now over to Mr. David Luletta.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Juarez, and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about the Santa Paula Creek Bridge. It's a project that I've been working on for over six years, often on, as we've tried to figure out the right way to get Santa Paula Street over Santa Paula Creek. We had a number of constraints on the design of the bridge, the overall design of the bridge, largely based on requirements from the county flood control district. Obviously, floods are a major issue, so one of the main design aspects is making sure that the bridge is going to be suitable for a flood control in the county. So, my name is Doug Fredericks. I've been with Somus for ten years. I am the senior bridge engineer for Somus. Somus is a seventy-five-year-old engineering firm based in Southern California. So, let me just scroll through, you, I think, know where the bridge is, Santa Paula Creek, Santa Paula Street over Santa Paula Creek, and I'm scrolling, and it's kind of working, okay? All right, yep. And this gives you a sense of what is going on, the bridge, the street goes east-west, of course, the creek goes north-south. These dark lines you see here are lines for the maintenance access road that the county needs to be able to maintain the creek as they watch the levee during flood events and things. So they require a road that's going to run along the levee here, and it'll actually go underneath Santa Paula Creek, Santa Paula Street. So that's the general orientation of the bridge. I'm going to have a better picture of this later, but this gives you a sense of what it looks like, if you were actually in the creek, looking at the bridge, elevation view of it. This is the section view of the bridge. It's a concrete bridge. It's very deep, it's about ten and a half feet deep, and it spans the entire creek. There are no piers in the channel, goes straight over the channel. Spend a little time on this picture, gives you the idea of the aesthetic elements that are going to be incorporated into the bridge. As the embankment for the bridge comes up from Santa Paula Street, we have to get the depth of the bridge over the top of the creek, to get it over the top of the flood level that's going to be in the creek. So we're going to have an embankment that'll be about twelve feet high at its highest point, right before the bridge. That embankment will be contained in retaining walls, and those retaining walls are going to be made out of, like, a masonry block element, that I've got a better picture of later. But obviously, as you look at the bridge, that'll be a major component of the aesthetics, right? This is the undercrossing that goes through, and then when you get to the actual bridge, where you've got a pedestal that I'll show a better picture of later, and some aesthetic relief along the railing of the bridge, we'll have the ornamental street lighting that is out there on the project already. And then, let me keep going to the better picture. This is, shows you the embankment as it comes up to the creek. It's going to be the same on all four corners of the bridge, so I've got four sheets that show kind of what those retaining walls look like, that you can look at in the packet in more detail. And here are the ornamental streetlights, these are the same streetlights that are out there in other parts of the project. And, so zooming in really on the, really the aesthetic elements of the bridge, so the pylons are going to be located at the beginning and the end of the bridge. These will sort of announce that the bridge starts, demarcate, that we've got a bridge that we're going over. We will have a, some sort of architectural aesthetic relief that really was taken from the city seal, the lemon, the leaves, I think you're familiar, we're seeing that around town. And then also on the barrier of the bridge, we propose kind of a hillside pattern that will represent the mountains that we see in Santa Paula. So that's the purpose of those, is that on the barrier, that it represents the rolling hills that are out there. There will be a galvanized steel handrail on the bridge, obviously for safety fall protection purposes. We propose not to color that barrier, to just keep it galvanized steel. The bridge is very deep, we'd rather not emphasize something above it to make it look darker and look deeper. Galvanized steel tends to kind of disappear into the background. And then you can see the gray block for the approach retaining walls as they come up to the bridge there as well. So, those are the essential aesthetic elements on this very large bridge, three hundred feet across the creek, and rather deep bridge, too, at about ten feet deep, and then two feet of railing on the sides, concrete rail. So it's a big block of concrete going across the creek, so... And I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice for some reason. So that essentially is my presentation for the evening, so I'd love to have questions, yeah?
Good.
In the design, and I'm not going to pick and tell what to design, but have you been in communication with the economic development department? Because we've just approved a particular style and color scheme for other things for our wayfinding around the city. Is there any intent to make sure that they match what we're doing elsewhere in the city? Or will there, is that possible?
Yeah, the wayfinding of the bridge, so there won't be any, there's no connection... Yeah, the wayfinding of the bridge, so there won't be any, there's no connection to it currently, at least for a bike path or anything like that. So I don't think there will be any wayfinding associated with the bridge itself. I think the overall project probably does have some wayfinding elements from the, from the development overall. Nothing specific to the bridge, though.
I would just suggest that you communicate with, with the department, because we've already approved some styles and colors, if that's at all possible, to coordinate the look across the city.
Yeah, yeah, the colored elements really are the approach retaining walls and the block on the walls. Other than that, there's no currently proposed any colored concrete or anything like that. But it is open to us to add.
The lemon thing and all of that off of the seal, kind of changing our look a little bit on that, if possible.
Yeah, and I think on the pedestals, there's a chance to incorporate something like that, yeah.
Councilmember Crosswhite?
It's a follow-up on that, because that was my question, was as we do the pop-up, the little lemon thing. I think the lemons were, when we approved that, that was definitely part of the aesthetic. And so my only question was if we could just, if there was any chance, and again, I mean, you can ultimately do what you want, but if there was any chance that that aesthetic could be as, because the new styling is Craftsman. So basically, that those lemon squares would be, or rectangles would be sort of as Craftsman-esque as possible. But again, that, it is all very, pretty close. But just, I know that we have some little tiles and things that could be just for, like, the shape of the lemons or the leaves or things. But yeah, that was, that was my thought.
We're very open to that, obviously. And the way it works is the contractor will have to create a mock-up of this, and we'll be able to approve the mock-up, so we can make sure that they start with the right picture before they put something out there.
Other questions?
I had some questions asked to me, but I'm not sure if this is just, I don't know if this is appropriate for this presentation, but about the, if there would be two traffic lanes, two bike lanes, is that part of?
Yeah, certainly. There's one lane in each direction of traffic. There are two bike lanes, and then there are two sidewalks, six-foot-wide sidewalks, getting across the bridge.
And a very specific question was the width of the sidewalks. Would it be, I guess I would ask, like, standard? Like, enough for three people to walk, like a mom with children or someone in a stroller or wheelchair?
Yeah, they're six feet wide, which is, which is very standard, and meets the city standard and state standard as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think mine is mostly a comment to staff, but just as the lanes are being designed across the bridge and as we're doing the bike trail on the Santa Paula side, and then there's going to be planning for the, to ultimately connect it all the way out to Fillmore on the east side, just that there's consideration made to how that all connects. Because that's not just your, but just so that we don't end up in a situation where we go, oops, those ended up in the wrong place. So just to make sure that everybody's talking about how that actually gets striped and laid out.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I have a question about that tunnel. Now, that follows the flood channel, flood control channel path, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Is that going to be lit up underneath the tunnel? Because that would lend itself to illegal activity, graffiti.
Yeah, it's going to be locked off, so.
Tunnel itself is going to be?
Yeah, there'll be fences around it and a lock that the county flood will have, and the city will have access to.
But what about the actual tunnel?
The actual tunnel is not lit, but you won't be able to get into it, because it'll be fenced off.
They're going to block off the entrance to the tunnel?
Yeah, it's actually, so it goes down and it comes up. So there'll be walls running along the lowered portion. There'll be like a U-shaped fence that runs along and then cuts it off access to get, before you can even go down into that area. So it'll be secure, as secure as a fence.
And I hope this is an allowable question, but the lighting that goes across that is going to match our lighting in the city. And ultimately, who's responsible for it? Because a question came up about the freeway and the underpasses, Mr. City Manager. Our underpasses underneath Eighth, Tenth Street and Palm, when the lights go out, back, I think, in sixty-five, there was an agreement that the state owned it, but we repaired it. And then somehow that document is gone. So who would be responsible for the bridge once it's done? Is it ours or is it Limanera's?
It's the city's responsibility for the lighting once it's up. There's no state involvement in this.
Okay. Or Limanera either, it's just, it's our bridge and our lights after that?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions? That was simple. Okay, this is just a receiving file from the developer. We thank you for that tonight. Is there any other feedback that, well, I know there was feedback, and maybe we would ask and see if there is some way that they would work with our wayfinding company to see if there's something you do. I mean, I understand the galvanized is hiding it, but it's certainly going to stand out as different, so. Okay, other than that, then I guess that's it. That's a receiving file. And if, thank you. You can go get the mayor.
Future agenda items, eleven A. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're anticipating fairly light meeting, your first meeting in February. We are going to be looking to schedule an evening study session, but one that we will televise, probably hold in this room, to return to you on the topic of the use of the triangle property. And we'll be looking at some possible dates, either at the end of this month or in February. So just be aware, Christina might reach out sometime soon, probably next week, to start to look at calendars. Other than that, be happy to take any questions.
No questions? All right. I'll be adjourning tonight's meeting in memory and honor of Carlos Perez and Maria Ceja, and those that we have recently lost. Have a good night.